The voting is open, please log in. If you need support, please raise your hand and tech support will come around. Alderman Garza. Isaac Hadson. All right, I will go and call for a voice vote. Alderman King, not present. Alderman Harriston, not present. Alderman Sawyer, not present. Alderman Mitchell, not present. Alderman Beal, I saw him. Alderman Beal's not present. Alderman Burke, not present. Alderman Coleman, not present. Alderman Curtis, not present. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Shea is present. Alderman Taylor, not present. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Burnett? He is present. Alderman Talafaro? Alderman Talafaro is present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez? Not he, not present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa? Not present. Alderman Osterman? Not present. All right, we are closing the vote. Mayor, we have a quorum.
There are 38 Aldermen present. We have a quorum. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is grand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Dan Osborne of Park Community Church. Pastor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot. As she said, my name is Dan Osborne, a resident of the 45th Ward and pastor of Park Community Church Forest Glen in the 39th Ward. These words have been prayed by many in this city countless times, and yet in their familiarity we find not fatigue but resilience. Jeremiah 29:7. Seek the peace and prosperity of the city to which I have carried you. Pray to the Lord for it, because if it prospers, you too will prosper. Would you pray with me? God, we pray to you this morning for the good and peace of the city of Chicago. We know that our city is, when our city is in good health, the implications reach far beyond the borders of our city. We live in a city of global influence. We live in a strong city, but a city of scars, many who are deeply wounded and have grown callous, and yet from that wounding comes violence, deep struggles with mental health, the lack of compassion, often not a love of our neighbor but a suspicion and then rejection of them. We pray, Lord, that you would bring healing for our city. I pray for the leaders gathered in this room, that they would be true servants who use their influence for good. We pray for civic leaders with conviction, who look to do not what they are, just feel is expediently right, but are convinced in their heart is right, even if it costs a vote. I pray for a humble courage in this room that fights for those who cannot fight for themselves. I pray for Mayor Lightfoot in particular, that she would act with courage on her convictions, even when they conflict with others. We know that she carries a profound weight, that you would allow her to experience moments of rest and refreshment. I pray also for our budget process that happens in this room today. We pray that the money would be used wisely, that it would be used for the good of the city and the communities here, that those making the weighty decisions about where it goes and how to use those funds would recognize the gravity and responsibility entrusted to them, and the precarious temptation of greed and selfishness that plagues us all. We pray for the upcoming election season, and know that tomorrow is a significant moment in our country, and as we look forward in our city. And so we pray for your help. I ask all of these things, in Jesus' name, amen.
Next up, ladies and gentlemen, is a public comment period. Mr. Clerk?
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for Aldermanic review. Our first speaker today is Jonah Karish.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot, Clerk Valencia, and Alders. My name is Jonah Karish. I'm 22 years old. I'm a resident of the 47th Ward, and I'm here today giving public comment at Chicago City Council for the first time in my life, because I am angry. I'm angry that by a recent count from the Chicago Coalition for the Homeless, 65,000 Chicago residents, more than the population of an entire ward, are currently unhoused, 7,000 more than in 2021. I'm angry that the city of Chicago spends orders of magnitude less on homelessness services than other major cities, and our comparatively large homeless population reflects that reality. I'm angry because the proposed budget before you today does not put a sustainable, dedicated source of revenue towards ending mass homelessness, and that by approving this budget, City Council is making a choice to kick the can down the road on this issue for another year. And I'm angry that because of this negligence, 65,000 of your constituents, at least 15,000 of them children, will have to enter another brutally cold Chicago winter without the assurance of a roof over their heads. Imagine your child bouncing from friend's couch to friend's couch, shivering under viaducts, all because their elected officials won't spend dedicated money on housing them. Now imagine that 15,000 times. How dare you allow this to happen? Mayor Lightfoot brags that this year's budget dedicates $200 million to homelessness services, but most of it comes from one-time federal COVID relief money, much of which was already allocated last year, and all of which will dry up soon. We can solve the homelessness crisis by spending money over time, but that requires a long-term plan, not the one-time Band-Aid solution offered by this budget. The good news is that there is a plan out there, the Bring Chicago Home Ordinance, sponsored by Alderman Martin &amp; Haddon. They propose that those making real estate purchases and sales of over $1 million pay an increased tax of just 1.9% on the value of the property being sold, creating a long-term revenue stream for permanent, affordable, and supportive housing. I'm sure you've heard by now that a week from today, there is a special City Council meeting to hold a hearing on this proposed legislation. If you care about ending the suffering of your homeless constituents, surely you will attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karish, for your comments. Our next speaker is Peter Frederick.
Last year, the Chicago City Council shot down a proposed resolution criticizing India's Citizenship Amendment Act. Notably, the CAA has been compared to Nazi Germany's Nuremberg laws, which stripped German Jews of citizenship. In that context, any humanitarian-minded person certainly ought to criticize and condemn it, yet no, instead, the city of Chicago bent the knee to four in pressure. While many Indian-Americans insisted the city pass the resolution, the city of Chicago paid more attention to the frantic calls coming from the Indian consulate. Although not just the Indian consulate, Dr. Bharat Bari of Chicagoland also applied pressure. Interestingly enough, Bharat Bari happens to be a long-term leader of VHP America, an organization associated with the HSS. Now, the HSS is the international wing of India's RSS, fascist RSS paramilitary, which happens to be the parent organization of the country's ruling party, the BJP. The BJP notably passed the Citizenship Amendment Act. And back to Bari, back in 2014, he led a contingent of hundreds of volunteers from America back to India to campaign for the BJP's election. So he is a leader here in America of an organization with partisan interest in the ruling party of India, the same party which passed the CAA, and he also literally campaigned to elect that party, then he turned around and told Chicago not to criticize that party's passage of the CAA. Sound like a neutral voice to you? Anyways, forget about the CAA, let's talk about the HSS. The HSS is the international wing of the RSS, a nearly 100-year-old paramilitary in India that has perpetrated assassinations, including of Gandhi, terrorist bombings, and massacres, particularly Muslims and Christians. The HSS here in America doesn't advertise its ties to the RSS, and perhaps that's why the city of Chicago awarded the HSS, a proclamation praising it in January of this year. Despite the city's $17 billion budget, you didn't bother Googling for five seconds to discover that the HSS is connected to a fascist paramilitary. That's okay. After all, Congressman Raja Krishnamurti, for instance, already knows, he's been repeatedly informed and warned by Indian-American groups around the country, but he apparently doesn't care and prefers the campaign funding he can get from leaders of the HSS, as well as from people like Bharat Bari. Bari notably was there with Raja from the ground floor. Maybe that's why Raja Krishnamurti reportedly actively collaborated with both the Indian consulate and the mayor's office to squash the resolution criticizing the Citizenship Amendment Act, a resolution which would have offended some of his oldest and most faithful campaign supporters, considering after all, that before they worked to elect Raja, they worked to elect the regime in India that eventually passed the CAA. Anyways, Chicago politics does have a reputation, so who am I to expect Raja or the city itself to stand on principle? Who am I to expect any other explanation for these actions, other than pay to play?
Thank you, Mr. Frederick, for your comments. Our next speaker is Creola Hampton.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Creola Kesarit Hampton, on behalf of Black, the Black Leaders Advocacy for Healthcare Equity in Illinois. And as everyone is speaking today on numbers regarding the budget, Chicago Department of Public Health has a budget of $40.4 million allocated for HIV and AIDS prevention and care. That $40.4 million, 95% of it is coming from CDC, the federal government, to CDPH to provide ethical oversight. However, of that $40 million, only $1.4 million of that budget was allocated to African-American-led organizations, even though statistics from the Chicago Department of Public Health show that 52% of new cases of HIV and AIDS are among African-Americans, 49% of new AIDS diagnoses are among African-Americans. The numbers, $40 million, only $1.4 million going to Black-led agencies, though 52% comprise new cases of HIV and 48% new cases of AIDS. Another number, there are 14 times more African-American women than white women in the city of Chicago who are HIV-positive. 14 times more African-American women. And according to the CDC, nearly two-thirds of African-American, Black, transgender women are HIV-positive. We are calling for oversight by the Budget Committee, oversight by the Ethics Committee, oversight by the Contracting Committee of the $40 million that is going to be released for new rebidding starting in January of next month. If there is not intervention created now, oversight and ordinance created now, by the time March comes, that money will be allocated again based on a racially inequitable system. We're asking for intervention, oversight, and funding equity, as the prayer opened this morning saying that Chicago needed healing and that the health of Chicago impacts our entire nation. We ask that more equitable healthcare funding be allocated in order to bring down the rates of HIV and AIDS that add a tumultuous epidemic effect in the city of Chicago and throughout the state of Illinois. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton, for your comments. Our next speaker is Imam Amin.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Imam Amin/Coach Amin. I am the Imam of Magic Al Maun on the west side of Chicago. I am a member and founder of Islamic Urban Community Center, and I am a member of the Inner Faith Roundtable on Homelessness. I have direct experience working with young people who are victims within the cycle of violence that plague our city. I know from my experience and my relationship with most of them, they struggle with homelessness and housing instability. Not having a stable roof over their head leads to feelings of despair, and when people feel desperate and hopeless about the future, turning to violence is a natural result. But when they have the stability of home, it gives them something to hold on to and to believe in, with a home they can study, find a job, and when they have the supportive service to help them through the trauma they have experienced, they can succeed. With a home, with a home or without a home, we cannot expect anyone to be safe or feel safe. So we can expect the cycle of violence to continue. Fortunately, we have a solution that would make a big impact here in Chicago, to provide more housing for people feeling the desperate, the despairedness of homelessness. The goal of Bring Chicago Home is to create a dedicated revenue stream to create housing and supportive services for people experiencing homelessness. The mayor's proposed budget is an example of why a dedicated stream of revenue is needed. The vast majority of the funding for homelessness in this year's budget is either double-accounted from last year, or is one-time funding planned with no continuation. It is not affordable or accessible to people who are experiencing the growing desperation of homelessness here in Chicago, and/or is not being spent on intervention that has been proven to end homelessness, permitted housing with supportive services. Only 8% or $17.4 million of the ongoing funding is, in this budget, is for permitted housing solutions. With federal funding drying up within one or two years, the time to act is to act now. Make a plan to replace the investments that we have seen from federal funds. Otherwise, hundreds of more people could lose the short-term housing assistance they receive. Over 10 years, the Bring Chicago Home proposal will create over 12,000 units of permitted housing with supportive services for people experiencing the growing sense of homelessness here in Chicago. If we stick with the mayor's plan...
Mr. Amin, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired.
Thank you, you're more than welcome.
Our next speaker is Myron Byrd.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Myron Byrd, and I'm with the Chicago Coalition for the Homeless, and I want to tell you, like my other constituents, why this is so important to me. I know this is a budget season, but to the City Council, we have a problem, and it's a big problem. And the problem is, is that this budget that y'all about to propose today, it's not a responsible budget. Frankly, it's misleading and fails to address our affordable housing and homelessness crisis here in the city of Chicago. Now, mind you, that number again is 65,611 homeless people that are in the city of Chicago that are part of a new ward that equals to all the other wards, and that ward is the 51st Ward. Your budget is a one-time stopgap, and of those, and of that funding, that is to be allocated for homelessness, in this year's budget, 79% of it comes from last year's budget. So, we came up with a solution. And I mean we, we as in the Bring Chicago Home campaign. We have a long-term solution. Our proposal creates a dedicated revenue stream that would be available every year by raising the rent, real estate transfer tax, by 1.9 percentage points on properties sold over $1 million. See, your budget is a Band-Aid approach. Once those funds run out, you don't have a plan connected to services. With Bring Chicago Home, our plan, we could provide housing and wraparound services to over 12,000 households within the next year. So this is why we are here, this is why I am here. Because this is a first, to put this on a, to put that on a budget, what you proposing, but look at us. We are the people of Chicago. I myself was once homeless, and I connect to those that are out here, and that 65,000 needs to be housed, and I believe if you can do the right thing, come and work with us, Madam Mayor, with Chicago Coalition for the Homeless, Bring Chicago Home, let's put this thing together, let's work together, and let's make this a ever-loving city as we bring Chicago home.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd, for your comments. Our next speaker is Dennis Oglesby.
Good morning, City, good morning, City Council and Mayor. My name is Dennis Oglesby, and I'm 19 years old. I recently graduated at Park Academy, and I'm the, I'm a member of Good Care Mass City. Gun violence is personal to me because my brother Frank, life has been taken to gun violence. I lost my close friend Kanye since I knew since fifth grade to gun violence. He was killed at High Park this year. They might be still alive if the youth decided that violence was the only option to deal with violence and had better choices and opportunities. Yes, we need to put that, yes, we need to get the guns off the street, but even more importantly, we need to teach children and teens to heal from trauma and lead peaceful lifestyles. The Peace Book will empower, will empower young people, like me, to build peace in their communities. The city currently doesn't have a plan to support teens who wants to end violence in our neighborhoods, so we all asking to pass the Peace Book around, so we could begin to make our schools and communities safe. We understand that only 10% of the violence, the violence budgets has spent this year. We are asking you all to find the Peace Book so that we can teach youth and to not pick up guns in the first place and resolve conflict through restored justice. We will work, we will want to work with you to save lives, and we will stop having our young Black people dying, and we'll live on.
Thank you, Mr. Oglesby, for your comments. Our next speaker is Jason Coulter.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot. Good morning, City Council. My name is Jason Coulter. I'm the pastor of First Congregational Church. I'm a minister in the United Church of Christ and a resident of the 49th Ward. Every morning on my drive to work, I go up Clark Street past Tewee Park. Tewee Park is one of those places in our city that where there has sprouted a new community known as a tent city of people that do not have permanent, stable housing. I've been on Clark Street to serve sandwiches to the residents of this community, and I know that what they desire is not to live in Tewee Park, not to reside through this long winter in a tent, suffering the indignity of that form of housing. What they desire is permanent supportive housing, something that the Bring Chicago Home Campaign can deliver, if the City Council acts, and if our community rises up and recognizes these people as our neighbors. Now, in my faith tradition, we have a commandment that says we are to love our neighbors as ourselves. So I want to tell you a story that Jesus once told some people. They asked him, the Pharisees came to say, well, Jesus, who is our neighbor? And Jesus told them a story. He said, there was a man going along the road to Jericho, and the thieves fell upon him and beat him and threw him on the side of the road. And one priest walked by, and a Levite walked by, but finally a Samaritan came by and helped that man, pulled him up out of the ditch, put him on his donkey, and cared for him. The Pharisees said, well, then who, Jesus said to the Pharisees, now who did the right thing here? And they said, the Samaritan. And so what we are to take from this story is that these folks who are by the side of the road, by the side of Clark Street, unhoused, they are our neighbors, and we are called to reach out to them, recognize them as human beings, and provide them what they need, which is permanent supportive housing, a place to live with dignity. Now, we have the capacity in this city to do this. There are resources available to us. The budget is going to be decided upon today. You can allocate those resources to do exactly what I'm talking about. And I call upon you this day to have the courage, to have the vision, and to have the compassion, to be a true neighbor to our unhoused neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter, for your comments. Our next speaker is Christopher Balthazar.
Good morning, everyone. I'm pleased to join this space to talk about a very important issue, which is funding inequities among Black-led, community-based organizations in Chicago. I am the executive director at Task Force Prevention and Community Services. We are a Black-led, community-based organization in the Austin community in Chicago. Our services predominantly impact LGBTQ+ youth in Chicago. While there are several arguments as to what a Black-led organization is, at Task Force, this means that 90% of our board identify as Black or African-American. Our top leadership within the organization are Black or an African-American. We are located in a predominantly Black community, servicing, offering culturally responsive services to those who live in the Austin community and LGBTQ+ youth across the city. There are many organizations across the city that are like mine, and we all suffer from a dearth of funding to address the devastating impact that HIV has had on our communities. The community of Austin has one of the highest unemployment rates in the city, furthering one's vulnerability to HIV. While studies have indicated that HIV rates are decreasing, we still see that Black communities are being left behind. Blacks and African-Americans represent 57% of HIV AIDS diagnoses and 48% of late HIV And meanwhile, Blacks also represent 29% of the city of Chicago's population, according to the most recent census. There are 2.2 times more Black men who are HIV-positive than white men in Chicago. And despite these alarming statistics, only 1.48 million of the city's $40.4 million budget allocated to address HIV went to Black-led organizations. More needs to be done to address this devastating issue. Both in conversations with both Dr. Iwati and Deputy Commissioner David Kern, both have acknowledged the need for our City Council to look at this important disparity and to offer legislative guidance on addressing this issue. So what we ask today is that the city of Chicago's Health and Human Resource Committee, the Committees on Contract and Oversight, and our Committee on Ethics and Oversight, along with our City along with our city council and mayor, work collaboratively to address this very important issue that is devastating black communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is George Blakemore.
The big elephant in the room is racism. Racism. You're talking about housing. The federal government throughout the United States decided to get out of housing poor black people, not only in Chicago, throughout the ghettos throughout the United States. Why would you citizens embrace a sanctuary city? What is sanctuary, Mr. Blakemore, where illegals come to use these resources? None of the speakers spoke on that issue, and none of our elected officials speaks on that issue. How, how does it help the black community bringing in illegals? Why are black leadership, why is the black leadership silent? Claude Anderson says the negative effect that illegal immigrants have on the native black who was enslaved in America. So why are your elected officials silent? Homelessness, when you're bringing other people in, you're housing people from the Ukraine, people from South America, waiting across the Rio Grande, you give them housing. What about the people that's already here? And why is black leadership silent? Dr. King said, silent is betrayal. Don't blame this budget on Lady Lightfoot. Don't go there. This been here. Lady Lightfoot, I endorse you one million percent. You did not bring nepotism, corruption to this city. Racism. So you're looking for an escaped citizen. Look in the mirror, and you will see exactly what's happening. Something is wrong with you. Now, that, that minister was quoting of some kind of a good scenario, but first, first self-preservation is the first law of nature. Loving you, housing you, empowering you and your people, your legal citizens. I hope that I've been articulate enough. We need sanctuary. I'm so sad to see black people begging for housing, begging for job goods and contracts. Yeah, you cut me off.
Mr. Blakemore, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our final speaker today is James Robinson.
Good morning, City, good morning, City Council and Mayor. My name is James Robinson. I'm from the Twenty-eighth Ward, and I'm eighteen years old, a recent graduate of Hyde Park Academy and a member of youth, youth-led Violence Prevention Organization, Good Kids Man City. First, I want to thank all the Alders like Taylor, Rodriguez, Hairston, Sawyer, King, Dow, Haddon, Martin, Vausquez, Lopez, Rodriguez, Lasparra, and others who supported our Peace Book ordinance since we first spoke to them about it. Secondly, we as youth organizers and new voters hope that the rest of you support our cause for peace. The Peace Book will empower young people like me to build peace in their communities. The city currently doesn't have a plan to support teens who want to end violence in our neighborhoods, so we are asking that you all pass the Peace Book so we can begin to make our schools and communities safer. We understand that only ten percent of the Violence Prevention Budget has spent this year. We are asking you all to fund the Peace Book so that we can teach youth not to pick up guns in the first place and to resolve conflicts through restorative justice. We, we want to work with, with you to save lives. Young black men like me deserve to live, and you don't want to, and we don't want to go to any more, any more funerals of babies, young women, children, so peace, pass the Peace Book. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, this concludes the public comment period. There are no resolutions today. Next up, Communications, Madam Clerk.
I, City Clerk Valencia, transmit here with claims against the city of Chicago, which referred to Committee on Finance. Your Honor, there are no other reports or communications from city officers.
The Chair recognizes Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I move to suspend the rules to consider various items of unfinished business, which were noticed and filed with the clerk pursuant to Rule 41, pertinent to consideration and passage of the 2023 budget. They are as follows: the 2023 Code Corrections Ordinance, number two, the 2023 Substitute Management Ordinance as amended, number three, the 2023 Motor Fuel Tax Allocation, number four, the 2023 Motor Fuel Tax Allocation Intergovernmental Agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority and Cook County, number five, a series of corrections and revisions to the 2023 Annual Appropriation Ordinance and tax portion, and the 2023 Appropriation Ordinance as amended, number six, an ordinance regarding the issuance of general obligation bonds for new money purposes, the second lien water revenue, WIFIA, project bonds, the Series 2022 Increase in Borrowing Authorization of O'Hare Commercial Paper and O'Hare Line of Credit Programs, the establishment of Midway Line of Credit Program, and the amendment of various bond ordinances, number seven, the 2023 Substitute Revenue Ordinance, and finally, number eight, the 2023 Tax Levy Ordinance.
No objections, so ordered. Chairman Dow, we will begin the discussion.
Yes, I ask that the council discuss at this time the entire budget package, which consists of the various matters I just identified, and I reserve my right and Chairman Wagasback's right to close the discussion.
Are there any members of the body that wish to speak to this year's budget? The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, let me start by saying, you know, you're going to hear a lot of people probably stand up and say a lot of things, grandiose things, and probably some grandstanding. At the end of the day, they're going to say yea or nay. Let me just start out opening up saying I support this budget. I support this budget for several reasons. One, the investments that it brings and going to continue to bring to communities, and I got to always speak up first and foremost for the Seventeenth Ward community, because when our kids can have advantage in, in development in our communities, like Inglewood can have an advantage in development, that means a lot to me. But let me start by saying that as we talk about things from the Chair request, we don't just ask for things just for where we can pass this budget. It's ongoing things that we'll be looking at, Madam President. CPD, I know we asked for, there's ninety-four million dollars in carryover grant funding, and I just want to make sure that when we have money, that we spend it as much as possible in those years, because we cannot wait when we're dealing with a crisis. And so I just want to be mindful of that. When we, when we have money, let's get it out so that we can take care of the people in, in, in our city. I also ask for the total amount of carryover dollars from this sixteen-point-four-million-dollar budget, so I'll know what we are really putting in here and what came from carryover. I didn't get that number yet, and I would still like that number. Again, it's for the fact that we must make sure that we're spending dollars in those years that we're telling people that we're going to spend it. I requested information about discrimination cases throughout the city. Thank you for that information, but I want to make sure that we're focusing, I'm putting this on record, from over the four-year period, that we're focusing on the fire department, who had the most at thirty-four, the Department of Police, who had the second highest at fourteen, and the Department of Aviation at twelve. Everybody else over that four-year period was in single-digit numbers. So we must, we can pass the budget, but let's make sure that we're acting on these things, and as well as sexual discrimination, which was in double digits at the police department. I also asked for information about police vehicles of the sixteen-point-eight million dollars that we're spending in 2023, and another eighteen-point-one million, and I believe it's 2024 for two-sixty-six and two-seventy-seven respectively. One of my questions was how much was going to totally net new vehicles versus vehicle replacement. I didn't fully get that answer, because I want to know what that net new number is, because I never want to be caught again where I call CPD and they say we don't have a car available, and that cannot happen. And so as we pass this budget, and I, hopefully we pass it, because it's a good budget, if we don't stop here today, we hold people accountable in the same way as it relates to violence prevention. Yes, we got the numbers of the terms of, in, in terms of the people that we're giving money to as the agencies, the fiscal managers, but it's important that we know who those fiscal managers giving money to, so that, and I ask for that not only at the city level, but since we say we collaborate with the county and the state, we got to see all this funding working together. And today, I don't know that answer, and it's important that we know so if a target group or any other group is receiving money from the state, from the city, from the county, I need to know that total dollar amount so I can tell my residents how we're using their tax dollars, and I need to make sure that we know that. And in aviation, it's important that I know from a trade standpoint that I've gotten an answer to yet of the number of trades out there and how many people by ethnicity are working in those trades. It's important that we have that information. So again, as I hope we pass this budget today, this work does not stop here with passing this budget, but the work continues to begin with getting these answers and doing the due diligence that we need. I thank you, Mayor, for listening in this, in this session. I thank you for coming to the table in this session, and, and, and I'll go on record as saying, there's politics and there's budget. We'll deal with the politics come February, but right now, the budget is, I believe, is a good budget for our, for our city, and especially for communities on the south and west side, and we'll address the politics and everybody accept that when the politics get here. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lasparra.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I want to thank first off Chairman Dow for her leadership in this process. It's been great to be back in the room sincerely after two years away. I feel like the conversations, but the camaraderie were something completely different from one we had the last couple of years together. I want to thank everyone that I'm looking at on this side of the room. For folks who don't know, many of our commissioners are here with us today. I really appreciate your time in answering all of our questions so honestly and thoroughly. The, the rate of response on through-the-chair questions today was incredible over the past few weeks. The challenge for me, and I'm going to quote Alderman Moore here, Alderman, you just said when we have the money, we spend it, right? And we, we heard that during the convocation today, to not only allocate money, but to use the money, and that is what we did not do in this past budget. The budget that I voted for last year was encouraging to me for what we were endeavoring to do for this city, and then to look at those numbers over the past year and go line through line, domestic violence funding, zero appropriated, allocated out the doors, our money on youth deflection and diversion not out the door, our money for the scan programs to actually invest in our young people not out the door. It was deeply frustrating, because that's what I worked for. That was the course that we were trying to set for this city, so that was really distressing. I have to be honest. And then to look at a lot of the asks that were made by the Latino Caucus, my colleagues there, that seemed to have fallen on deaf ears, a lot of the asks from the Progressive Caucus that seem to have fallen on deaf ears, if this is supposed to be a reflection of our values, they're certainly not the values that a lot of us brought to the table. I know that we can do better. I know that we can create budgets that truly reflect the health and the safety needs of all Chicagoans, the sixty-six, sixty-five thousand Chicagoans who don't have an address, that fifty-first ward, who represents them? Where did they register to vote tomorrow? Like, those are the questions that we need to be asking ourselves. We have the opportunity to serve them for their health and their safety. This is not it. I wish that it was it, and I worked hard, 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 and I know so many of you did, to get to a budget that I could vote yes on. That is not where I'm at today, but I want to thank everybody for their participation in that work nonetheless. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas. Ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Madam President, I'm trying to sort of gather my thoughts here. I've been here a minute or so in this council, and I've been through, through many budgets. My first budget, of course, was 2003, and I was reading, I was kind of going back and recollecting exactly what happened that year. You know, what was the budget? What was the priorities? What was the intention of this city? To make it better, to make an impact. And of course, this is Richard M. Daley at that time was, was mayor, and, you know, he writes in his, when you disclose financial statements, of course, there's always a mission, there's always a page where the mayor sort of lays out what the priorities of the city and what exactly is our responsibility to our constituents and the people that we serve. Now, back in 2003, one of the top priorities was affordable housing. More than a hundred thousand units of affordable housing had been built. This is 2003, and yet in 2022, we're talking about the same thing, which means, and goes to show you that we've never weavered on our commitment to affordable housing, never. Our problems have varied. Our problems have become different. The pandemic has unleashed many people that needed help, psychiatric help. They needed help from people that they couldn't get to because we could not meet in person. You can read all the stuff in the reports that come out daily when people don't get the help, and they end up on the streets. It isn't because this city does not commit and does not fulfill its responsibility. There are many factors why people are homeless, and just putting a unit there for them where they can go is simply is not the old answer that everybody wants. There are other factors I also need help with. A case manager, someone that can help them get back on their feet. There are many various organizations that are on the ground trying to help these folks out. I know for a fact, because I deal with it also on a daily basis, and we also have had to be cautious and different, maybe it was different twenty years ago. And we also have had to be cautious and different, maybe it was different 20 years ago. But we can't just simply take people that they don't want to be taken and put them in a place where we know they're going to be safe. If they don't want to, they don't want to go, we can't make them go. At that time, our budget was $4.8 billion. We are now a $16 billion entity. And every year, we've met, we've gathered in this room to lay out the priorities of that year and the following year. And every year, I have voted for each individual budget because in the priorities of this city, the various services that we provide to constituents in this city, it lays it out for you. Pick and choose which ones you want, it simply is not an option. You want to talk about here, your presentation commissioner is here, you call him, you call him daily probably. The Commissioner of C-Dot is sitting back here. When you want your pay, your streets paved and you want your lighting to work, that's who you call. Planning developments here back here as well. Whenever your project stalled and you can't get it done and you can't get it, go to move forward, what is it that you do? You call one of them because it's important to you that things work in your, in your war. That's your responsibility. It's our responsibility. The mayor sets the tone, but we have to also implement. It is also our responsibility to be sitting here today and make sure that those priorities get enacted. People choose one thing to say, "This is why I will vote no, because we haven't met that standard." I disagree. Back in 2003, we also set a path forward to invest $800 million in infrastructure, in police stations, in fire stations, in libraries, in schools. And you know what? They've been built, have, back years, college prep costs $95 million, Calmek Academy, $35 million, our library in Little Village, a park in Little Village. Millions in infrastructure improvements throughout the pandemic, I mean, throughout the, the financial crisis. We call upon our city, and at that time, our mayor, and now, yeah, again, about lighting. Come on, Mayor, do me a solid. I got to get this lighting done, I got to get this lighting done because people are begging for it because they see changes in other neighborhoods, they also want the same thing. My constituents always ask, "Why is the North Side getting all this and we're not?" And sometimes I agree with them. So I set about to do the opposite and say, "You know, don't complain, do. How do we work together to make sure my constituents get the lighting done and the streets paved, the sweeping, the water management, our water mains that need to be redone?" All that has been done. There's not a time where I call water management on a water main project to see what's going on. It may take a little while, but it gets done. They're also back here. All these departments that you rely on are sitting here being responsible to you. They're here for a reason. So when I sit and stand here, I'm trying to understand exactly, what am I missing? I, I don't know what I'm missing, to be honest with you, because this is a big budget with a lot of responsibilities. I mean, we funded small businesses, hundreds of millions of dollars, Office of Labor Standards, we didn't have that before. We've added more bureaucracy because it demanded at the time that we do so. Office of New Americans, immigrants coming by on a daily basis. Some folks in the gallery disagree, but we also said, "This is a city of immigrants, a welcoming city." We've added our Office of Sustainability and Environment. We've added other offices because it needed to be done. All of you asked for those. And when the time came, mayor delivered, and yet we sit here, people are saying, "I can't vote for that budget." Which is which? Don't tell me it's raining when it's sunny. That's all I'm saying. Let's be honest. Let's have a true debate about something you may not like. But the fact of the matter is that this city is running, there's trains outside, things are happening. Yes, we have a crime problem. Out of the pandemic, many things have gone wrong. There's new people, there's new heads of departments in this city. It doesn't always blend well. It doesn't always take as quickly as you would want it to, but there's some tension. And there's people that I know, yes, and I give them the benefit of the doubt, it takes them a little longer just to get their bearings straight. But I know in their heart, they want to do the best for this city and to move it forward. That's what we're all here sitting and trying to accomplish. All I'm asking is that you look at the numbers, look at the financial statements, look at where the money's going, look at the impact. Is it making a difference? Is there more to do? Yes, of course. As I said, we started $4.8 billion, we're now at $16 billion. It just tells you how much the city is evolving, needing, accomplishing, getting things done. It goes to show you that while we're sometimes yet here together, then we're separate mentally, you're a different place than I am. And I'm about to leave you this great body. Your friends of mine, many have come to respect what you do on a daily basis. All I'm asking is to be fair, to be fair not to the president, the mayor, to be fair to your constituents, to be honest with them, but the fact that you are getting things done, that you are asking all these department heads for the things that they need, don't say that you don't, they're back here. So I leave you with that. I've always done the right thing. I don't always agree, Mayor, you know this. People know those texts we go back and forth, you and I, sometimes we're going to disagree. Sometimes it's not going to be all pretty, but your heart's going to be in it, otherwise why be here? I close with that. 2022 to '23, the budget's before you, the priorities are laid out, it's up to you to decide to go back to your constituents in this election year, that you do the right Because they might not agree with you, all the choices you make or that we make, we got to go back and explain to them, "Why isn't he voting for this budget?" The city has delivered time and time again. All I'm asking you is you do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I try to be brief. My Little Village brother over there. Listen, this... So I agree. I think we need to work to make sure that our 51st Ward is well represented. And to be quite honest, this budget does not reflect that. This budget does not reflect the Department of Environment that we've been fighting for for a number of years, doesn't bring Chicago home to the extent that we need it to, and it doesn't invest in treatment of trauma to the extent that it does need to. This budget, however, does add positions, bilingual positions to the Office of Labor Standards. It includes, it includes dollars for reproductive health, and also, most importantly to my Ward, it increases support so that we can bring in new affordable housing, federally-qualified health center, and other amenities to the 22nd Ward, the southwest side of Chicago. So it's been a tough, tough decision that I have to make to support this budget because I think I have some friends up there who I agree with. And I hope everyone here will be back on November 14th for a hearing on Bring Chicago Home, as I will be. We should have a quorum that day to debate this very important issue, to help bring Chicago home and bring more money, more desperately needed money for our homeless populations. But when I consider the aforementioned, the two, the over $200 million pension balloon payment that we'll have, but most importantly, in my local community, my leaders over the last year has spoken very clearly that they want more affordable housing, a grocery store for a food desert, that's included in this budget, and that's why I will be supporting this budget. I thank the city representatives who worked hard to make that happen. But we have so much more to do, and I'm committed to fighting to make that happen. And I'm actually very proud to have spoken alongside my brothers and sisters here, who are presenting very well for our community that needs further representation, and that's our 51st Ward. So thank you, brothers and sisters, for the fight that you keep on bringing. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hadden.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to acknowledge and thank all of the great city staff that are in the chambers today. So from our financial gurus over here to all of our commissioners, department heads, I see some folks from agencies here, hello Superintendent, and to all the city staff, especially the budget staff. Your city appreciates you, and, and I don't think we speak enough about how many of our city staff work beyond their scheduled hours, work beyond their scheduled shifts, work 24/7 in their dedication to serving the citizens and residents here in Chicago. So I appreciate every single one of you. This budget is a lot of things. It's, meets the numbers, right? It gets us to our, our state obligations, our financial obligations, the pension obligations, the increased expenses that we're putting forth to address the increasing crisis of people experiencing homelessness. There, there's some good things here, and I really appreciate the budget team, the staff, the department heads, and Mayor, you for making sure that we were able to make some improvements and some increases to these key areas. And also, and taking this back to the constituents of the 49th Ward, it's not enough. Residents are demanding, they're demanding, right? And even when we do something that is good work, right, even when we put forth something that is a answer to the question, we don't operate in a space where there's just one right answer, right? And we see that with our budgets a lot. They're complex. As Alderman Cardenas mentioned, I think most of us are well aware, like, it is complex. Budgets are hard. This is a lot of money. And also, our residents deserve more. We saw some new investments here on moving us closer to a Department of Environment or Climate and Equity, whatever we want to call it, but it's not enough. We're not there yet. Representing a ward where we've gone through lakefront erosion, losing a foot or two during every major storm from 2019 to 2020, where we were impacted, as we all were recently, right? And shout out to Bureau of Forestry and Department of Streets and Sanitation for helping us through those high winds on Saturday. But we had a tornado in Rogers Park, right? When does that happen? We had three women who died in their apartments during an early heat wave. And again, thanks to Commissioner Bowdoin, the Department of Buildings, and LRB, and the Law Department for helping us come up with legislation to more quickly adapt for next year. But we need a department that's fully empowered and resourced to address these issues for our city. It's the number one thing that we've talked about in addition to our violence prevention. As we expand our definitions and experiences of safety and health, this is a key component. Every decision that we make at our ward levels, from zoning decisions to building, to housing, to planting, to C-Dot, right? Look at our green alleys that many have had to be re-engineered, right? We didn't get done this year. Many of them had to be re-engineered because of the new calculations coming in that are great from the Water Department about what we're expecting for rainfall. So this is complex work that our departments do every day. They need help and support, and we need to make sure that there is a department that has the authority and the resources to bring this together so Chicago is a sustainable city. We're a leader in so many things, there is absolutely no reason why we can't be a leader in this. Another big thing here is the urgency. I know there's always so many demands on our, Mayor, there are tons of demands on you. There are demands on every single one of our commissioners, our departments, and on every single one of us because our residents deserve it, and that's the job, right? We don't complain about that because it's the job. These demands, I think, give us the responsibility to ask for more when we need it. And so here in this budget, the other thing we're falling short on are some of our promises. The Chicago Torture Justice Memorial, right? We've been asking for the funds for that since 2019 and before. The Department of Environment is one. Bring Chicago home. I hope you all are here for the 14th, for that special meeting, but this is a, this is a ballot referendum. We started this work in 2019, it was a promise. We don't have a solution yet. And we have been through difficult years with the pandemic. We've lost loved ones, we've lost money, we've lost so much in our city, and again, I know everyone's working hard to bring it back, and our residents still need more from us. The urgency also speaks to, this is a political year. We've got campaigns coming up, and I don't, I'm not mean like we need to do these for political reasons, but there's no guarantee that we'll be here. So for me personally, right, the job is to do as much as we can do to put our city in the right space, to put in protections for the city going forward, because it's not a guarantee that we will be here. So I ask all of you to consider the commitments that you've made, the commitments that our city has made, the promises, and what we owe, the services that we owe our folks, and ask yourself, yes, this budget lines up and it zeroes out, and yes, it does some good things, and there's some great investments, but we could have done more, we could have done better, right? And we should. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Well, first, Maria will be here for the next four years. But thank you, Madam President. I want to start by commending Chairman Pat Dowell for her outstanding leadership, not just for this budget, but for the last three and a half years during COVID. She worked with all of us in a very collaborative way, and I just want to say thank you, Pat. Appreciate working with you. I want to thank Susie Park. Give it up for Pat. Pat, too, will be here hopefully for another four years. But I want to thank Susie, Jenny, and Rishma for their leadership in putting our city on sound financial ground. There's a lot of good that's in this budget. There's no property tax increase, with the exception of new construction, which is increasing, which is good for homeowners, especially those that are going to get their property tax bills in the week ahead. There's also money going for additional pension payments, which is going to be critical for the financial stability of our city moving forward, and that's a positive step that we're doing. There's also positive changes that occurred during the budget process, where there was some listening and collaboration that went on, including funding for rapid rehousing, which is critical for getting people out of homelessness and into apartments. The budget was introduced with 800 units, up from 400 last year, it's going to go to 1,200 units. That's 1,200 people hopefully that will be housed this year, out of tents, under, out of under viaducts, in a place to get back on their feet in a positive way. I want to commend Alderman Hadden for her work to push the budget office in this process on that. There's also going to be four new positions for homeless outreach, those people in DFFS that are on the ground in our communities, going out there, interacting with people to get them the help that they need. And that help is not just always a house or a place to stay, it's mental health services. All of us know in our communities, those people that have been out there every single day and continue to be out there, it's not just their homelessness, they're dealing with severe mental illness. Having people on the ground who are trained to go out there is critical, and I think that's a positive. that's a positive. The other thing is that we have a new Commissioner of AIS, and I appreciate her taking on the task of looking for shelter space around the city. All of us know our communities very well, but having a more efficient way to find shelter space for migrants that are coming to Chicago, those that are homeless, there's a more efficient way to do that. And I'm going to count on her, and we will hold her accountable, and the other departments, to make sure that that works. As a Chairman of the Housing and Real Estate Committee, it's important also to point out there's a significant amount of money that is going towards affordable housing in every community across the city of Chicago. South Side, West Side, North Side, there's more construction that's going there, more money for lead abatement, for those to make sure that children are not getting lead abatement, making sure that people can stay in their homes, older Chicagoans with rehab, and rehabbing to make sure that they're there, and renters are able to get supports. And I can't stress enough the work that's been done in collaboration with the Administration, Department of Housing, and all of us, the last three and a half years to make sure that with COVID, that wave of evictions has not happened. And I think that's something that, given the financial status of our country and our city, we have to be mindful to make sure that that does not happen. So there's a lot of positives that are in this budget. There's also candidly a lot of frustration, and I think that the Department of Environment conversation, you know, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. We should have a Department of Environment, period. And we spend a lot of energy, and staff, and time arguing against something that all of us, or large majority of people, think is the right thing to do. That's time that is not well spent. That environment, when we don't talk to each other, we talk at each other, is one that makes it difficult to get things done. All of us are elected to get things done. Seventy-seven neighborhoods, 50 wards. And when we're not working in collaboration together, easy things become difficult, difficult things become near impossible. And Chicagoans across the city, we don't have the time, the luxury, to do that. We have to act with a sense of urgency. So, there will be a Department of Environment at some point. I commend all my colleagues who push for it, but it's not, and none of us can really pin down why, but it is what it is. It's a little bit of a reflection of how things have gone, and that's not a good place to be. We have to work better, together. The other part is, you know, we have to acknowledge the violence that we see across our city. And when I talk about frustration, I think that we need to collaborate, we have to have more accountability, and we need to implement. This budget is, as we said, a moral document for our city. If we are not implementing the budget and using the money, it is a hollow promise. And there are some communities can survive that hollow promise and move along, and there's some that get stung by that empty promise. The money is in this budget. We are allocating a huge amount, probably more than we're going to see in a long time, more than I've seen in my time in City Council. We have to make sure that that works on the ground, that every department is implementing and spending that money, and we have to do it in collaboration. Public safety is our number one issue, and I think that when we look at how we allocate manpower and how we use resources, Superintendent's here today with us, he was here for seven hours with Pat Doll, we have to collaborate more. We have to look at information and resources we get. University of Chicago did a crime lab, did a study about how we should use manpower. We should use that information. We don't need another study. That was something that came up after the fact. I don't know that we need another study. Let's use the information that we have. I would encourage all of you to read the report that was done by the new commission on, Community Commission on Public Safety and Accountability, something that we created over this last three and a half years. In a very short time, they put out a report that I think all of you, even those that voted against that, can embrace and look at, because it's things that you think we need. We need a more cohesive plan to deal with public safety. It's not about the allocation, it's about the implementation. And unlike Alderwoman Haddon, and Doll, and many of you, I'm not going to be here after May. But we have to work to make sure that next summer, who, those that are here, in the Police Department, in the city, and all the leadership positions, that we are ready for this. We know what summer is like in Chicago. Having a plan to deal with that should not wait until May, that has to start now. And I hope that the Police Department, and Superintendent Brown and his staff will continue to meet with us, collaborate with, show us the engagement that we've seen in recent weeks, for the next few months, to prepare us to have safety. We have to have a sense of urgency. And I want to talk about violence prevention money. In dealing with violence in my neighborhood, which is much different than many of yours, you go at violence with everything you've got. Kitchen sink, to knock it down, make it safe. Then, over time, you keep that safety. We don't have the luxury to wait and use this money glacially over the next five to 10 years. We have to use it now. Last year, we passed a budget, over $85 million to violence prevention funds. We spent around $5 million on that. And I know there's times that you have to make sure that organizations that are getting the funding are, they have the infrastructure to make sure that money is used wisely, but when we think of last May, June, July, August, September, and we think of the violence in our city, it is inexcusable that we did not spend more of that money. We, as a city, have to put that money on the ground in communities. We have to do it with a sense of urgency. If there are organizations that need to help, let's help them now. Let's help them in November, December, January. Let's not wait until May. We can't wait until May. We have to get that done now. We have to have better collaboration, accountability, and implementation. And we have to make sure that we're ready for addressing the violence that we see. The budget I'm going to support today because the money's there. How we implement it is something I'm going to use my next few months to make sure that we do, and I think that's something all of us have to hold, all the departments, but specifically when it comes to public safety, we have to do that together. So, with that, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to thank Chairwoman Dowell for her really hard work running this budget through this last few years, and to everybody that got involved in the process. We came into this term with hopes for transformation. We organized, we researched, we talked to experts and met with communities. We had a big agenda to meet the needs of our neighbors. We end this term without those basic demands that we made. We were promised many things on last year's budget. Unfortunately, as my colleague Alderman Lasparra shared, most of those were not fulfilled. Our communities have been fighting for our unhoused neighbors through Bring Chicago Home, through the restoration of the Department of the Environment, Treatment of Trauma, with reopening our public mental health centers, Peace Book Ordinance, Torture Justice Memorial, and we got none of that. Although we have seen a lot of effort to hire police officers, I have seen it with ads on the train, outside of the train, on the platform, bus stop, paper, billboards. I didn't see one single ad to hire clinicians, the ones that were promised for our community mental health centers, not one. Out of 14 clinicians, we hired four. Four clinicians out of a promise that was made last year to increase the staffing of our mental health centers by 73%. We keep being told that our public mental health centers matter, that they are a priority, but people don't even know they're there. People don't know how to make an appointment in our public mental health centers. We have been asking for a website where you can go and see these clinics and what are the services that are available. That doesn't exist. We've been asking, and asking, and asking. One of the most important things, I believe, for me in this budget was to advance even a little bit the framework of Treatment of Trauma. One of the things that we proposed was to turn three out of our five remaining mental health centers, three, make them into walking crisis centers that could be open 24 hours. It would only mean that you would increase the staffing of three of those centers in order for people to be able to be transported when they had mental health issues that didn't require going to the ER and didn't need to end up in people being at a police station. But that didn't happen either, and I'm going to tell you why that was important to me. I imagine that people in this chamber remember Irene Chavez. Irene Chavez was a queer Afro-Latina woman, veteran, who was going through a PTSD episode. She was under treatment, she had a therapist, she had an incident in a bar. The police was called. She was transported in a police car. While she was in the car, she said many times that she needed to talk to her therapist. She said it many times. She ended up in a holding room at a station where she took her own life. She needed mental health care. She didn't need to be at a police station. And that happened because we didn't have the tools to be able to support that woman at the time when she needed it. We are asking for things that are basic, we are asking for things that are being done in other cities that don't even have the amount of resources that Chicago has. We're not asking for too much. So, as my colleague Alderwoman Maria Haddon said, I think that we should all take a look at what we have been able to accomplish and what we have not been able to accomplish through voting yes, and yes, and yes, and yes on budget, like some colleagues have said before. And I'm going to be a no in this budget, and I hope that more people join. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Siccho Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all the people who have come to testify and continue to hope that this council starts doing what we're supposed to do, which is to legislate and to ensure that every penny in this budget, and unprecedented budget, actually reach those in need. I think we have heard, and the numbers are clear, this budget, at least in the last 20 years, have quadrupled. And I think the question is indeed valid. With a $16 billion budget, where is the money going? And who are we helping? I tell you that, at least some of us are committed to listen to Main Street, to listen to the constituents on the ground, and not to Wall Street, not to special interest groups. Most of those nonprofits, where CEOs make three-figure salaries, six-figure salaries, where people are truly struggling to find a home, to find shelter, to find a counselor, to find after-school programming in our schools, to find programming in our park district, to make sure that our public transportation is safe and running, that we have agencies that come regularly to provide quarterly meetings, as they should, from the CTA to CPS to the park district, we shouldn't be begging for that. We should be making sure that our constituents have indeed a voice and a set so, especially with $16 billion on the line. We have to make sure that our departments are fully funded, and that we're not struggling to make basic needs attainable, because the pain has grown, the challenges ahead continue to grow. And our residents are saying that they cannot make ends meet. As taxes go up, rent's going up, inflation continues to grow, and people cannot make ends meet. So this $16 billion budget is our last opportunity for this council to deliver on their promises on a fair and just Chicago. Because the biggest problem in the city of Chicago, if we want to talk about public safety, is inequity, is poverty, is despair. We cannot say that budgets are moral documents, but yet fail to ask the tough questions. I would like to share just one of the stories from Main Street, so you can see that the narrative does not meet the actions on residents like Marta P., who lost her son to gun violence, who lost her husband to the pandemic, among the other 8,000 residents. And if we add the violence and the pandemic of violence, that number easily surpassed 10,000 people in this pandemic. The trauma, the despair, and the lack of support is very real. Marta today struggles not only to find a counselor. Marta also now is facing potential eviction, because there's no support to address depression. The suicide rates among Black residents, Latinx residents, and the very poor continue to be on the rise. Hate crimes continue to affect not only Asian residents, Black residents, Latino residents, LGBTQ residents, homeless residents. That's what we're supposed to be legislating for, so people like Marta have access to the basic safety nets that we should offer every single resident. Another crisis that looms close, not only the mental health crisis that Alderwoman Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez mentioned, that can be addressed with the proper resources. There is also the crisis of housing. We have a whole 51st Ward, 60,000 people are facing homelessness. We see what's happening in other neoliberal cities like San Francisco and New York. And here in Chicago, as we have almost a quarter of luxury units vacant, we continue to see the disparities and the lack of action when the need continues to grow. We see CHA land grabs, when we see thousands of people waiting for decades for a home that was promised, but yet they're waiting. We continue to see the lack of push to invest in affordable and public housing. So those 100,000 units that back in 2003 were already a commitment of the city, we're still waiting for that commitment to be delivered, because it shouldn't be normalized. We're still waiting for that commitment to be delivered, because it shouldn't be normalized that we have so many people, so many families in homeless situation. So when we see refugees and migrants coming in, as these migrants and refugees are also escaping violence, global warming, and failed policies that affect us all, we got to do better than offering just pandering in a situation that needs a plan and a vision to address the needs of all communities. So when we see a budget that includes 37% for the Chicago Police Department, but we continue to see the insecurity in our communities, especially in the poorest areas of the city, in the West Side, the Southwest Side, the South Side of Chicago, we cannot say that our communities feel safe, that this budget does justice. 26th Street, 18th Street, to represent the most important commercial corridor in the city of Chicago. Yet we're treated like second-class residents, and we have to struggle even to maintain our small businesses, as nonprofits continue to profit instead of helping those small businesses and fail even to provide basic quarterly reports, so we can see where the money is going. When we have vacancies in the Chicago Police Department, because we're putting working people at risk across the board because of the failed policies that continue to ignore the poverty and inequality in our communities, those funds are certainly better spent to make sure that we have our kids in our schools and after-school programming, that we're offering trades and opportunities that we can bring back to our communities. Many would like to pander on the legacy of Mayor Washington. But Mayor Washington, one thing that he did is give us an opening, especially in our Latinx community, a third, a third, and a third, that should be reflected in our local hiring and our hiring in the city and other government institutions. Because we want to curb violence, let's make sure that we have parents that have W-2s and that we have schools that will be funded. Because the violence that we see today is the violence that was generated by closing 50 schools in the closest parts of the, in the poorest areas of the city. And to shut down mental health clinics, half of them, again, in the poorest areas of the city, had created the conditions that we have today. With a $16 billion budget, we cannot say that we cannot reopen those mental health clinics. We cannot say that we cannot keep our communities safe. We cannot say that we cannot reopen the Department of the Environment. So people in the Southeast Side, in the Southwest Side, and in every corner of the city does not have to tolerate that one in 10 children in our communities, that's still positive for lead, creating permanent cognitive damage to our communities and our future. We cannot say that we are following best practices, when we're ignoring even reports from Inspector General, who have urged the city to open the Department of the Environment, that have also questioned punchers like the Shot Spotter, that could easily be funded, the Facebook, and other initiatives. Because what our young people and the people in the city of Chicago need is opportunity and prevention and investment. We, as a body, have, again, the last opportunity to make sure that this budget puts funding in our communities, that we have a city of big shoulders, we have the hardest-working people in the country, in Chicago. But yet, these budgets continue to fail, almost vulnerable. I urge City Council to ask those questions. What was the last time there was an audit even on the capital needs of the Chicago Police Department? But yet, we're going to put more funding in that. We need a city and a vision of equity. We need a vision that is courageous in the time of fear, that actually delivers in saying that there's no tolerance for white supremacy. But we need to see in actions, because we cannot say the last few years, things have gotten better. This is our last opportunity to make sure that the funding goes to our communities in need, if we want to make sure that the city also has sustainable revenue. And I'll close with this, because as federal funding will run out, we continue to fail to tax the rich. And I'll mention very clearly with names, like Mr. Ken Griffin, who not too long ago was pushed into defeat and successfully defeated the progressive income tax, and yet after that, he changed residency. Many of us are still here in the city of Chicago. My children certainly will grow up in the city of Chicago. And for them, and for the many families in the city of Chicago, we ought to do better. We need to create sustainable revenue for our departments. We need to create a society that is equitable. We need to tax corporations like Amazon, that have recorded profits in record numbers, so that we have to be begging for the basic things that our kids and our families need. We need to tax the rich. And Mr. Texas, Mr. Griffin, had $50 million to defeat a progressive tax, but it's nowhere to be found when the tough decisions have been made. This is the time for the council to think about the future that we want to build. And we need our departments to be fully funded, and for that, we need sustainable and progressive revenue and support of bringing home Chicago. And we will further more, we need a sustainable income, so that housing is a human right, so mental health is not a luxury for those who can afford it. And the fully-funded schools are a reality, and our small businesses are a priority. Let's tax the rich. Let's tax the corporations that today are creating monopolies in grocery stores, as our people go hungry every day. Let's tax those who can't afford it, and let's stop putting the burden on working people, nickel and diming working people that are in need. Our constituents need us today, so that's why I'll be voting no in this budget and urging that this body make sure that the funding goes to our communities and not to pander for political reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman King.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I too want to uplift my colleague and seat chair for the work that she's done on the budget. May not always agree, but she's fair in the process and trying to bring everybody's priorities to the floor, so thank you for that, Chair Dow. I do agree, there are a number of good things in this budget around pension, around rapid rehousing, and I don't often disagree with my friend and colleague Alderman Moore, but this budget is a reflection of our priorities. And our number one, two, and three priority in this city right now is safety, gun violence prevention. And I do not think that this budget addresses gun violence in a significant way. We allocated dollars, as Alderman Osterman mentioned last year, over $85 million, and the fact that less than $5 million, we don't even know if that's been appropriated or out the door yet, but less than $5 million has been spent, is a travesty. And we've asked the administration even for data going back years on where money for violence intervention has been spent, and we haven't seen that data at all. We also know that the money that's been appropriated, like I said, last year, isn't even out the door. We need to be getting that money out the door. The violence is ever clear in our city, and the fact that it's not is, again, a travesty. We've also recommended dollars for racial redress by incentivizing Black, Brown, young men most likely to be shot or to shoot, to come into the legal market with stipends, with job training, with trauma-informed care. Those are things that we need to be allocating our budget towards if we don't want to be back here again in 20 years. As my colleague also said, we also know that over 50% of calls to 911 are for nonviolent offenses, yet we are failing to escalate pilot programs that we have out there that can answer some of these alternative responses to 911, which is a win-win. We can get people who are trained in homeless intervention and mental health insecurities to respond to those types of calls for service and allow our police to do what they're trained to do. And so, those are some of the reasons that I'll be voting no on this budget. I've also asked, as, you know, the budget director knows, just a simple question on how much money we spend for CPS in this budget, which we do, we spend a lot. CPS has its own $9 billion budget. Just want to understand what pension monies are allocated, what other resources we have asked, and I've failed to receive that. As other colleagues have uplifted, the Department of Environment is truly important. Again, where we spend our money shows where our priorities are. We have sacred resources in this city, like water. The West Coast doesn't have any water. The East Coast has been ravaged by hurricanes. We need to protect, you know, our water that we have here, the air that we breathe. A Department of Environment would say that that's where our priorities are. Equity is a term that's just thrown around cavalierly now. People don't even really know what it means. But this budget is not equitable. It's not, the resources, especially this year in our budget, spent towards African-American contracting is down, the money spent inequitably for HIV response, the money spent inequitably for African-American trans groups. It's not equitable, and so we shouldn't throw that term around cavalierly. I think even low-hanging fruit, like having lots in Black and Brown communities, just be clean. Those are our city lots. It reflects how we feel about our city. I hear, you know, Alderman on the North Side complaining about alleys not being clean. Lots are not mowed on a regular basis. They're not clean. That also helps with violence in our communities. And so, you know, not having these priorities taken care of, especially the violence intervention, again, you know, we should take this opportunity and spend $200 million on violence intervention while we have the resources, while we have federal resources, so that we're not back here in 20 years. And the fact that the money's not out the door, it just shows that it hasn't been a priority. And for this reason, Madam President, I will be a no. Thank you.
Alderman King, the Chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank the advocates from the veteran community that came to me about two weeks ago and urged the City Council to reinstate the Office of Veteran Affairs. I want to thank the 40-plus colleagues of mine that signed on to that budget amendment. They're returning citizens, too, and we got to remember to acknowledge them, not just on two days out of the year, Veterans Day, which is coming up Friday, and Memorial Day. These brave men and women put it all on the line for this democracy, and we got to make sure that we're taking care of them, whether it's addressing their issues with homelessness, PTSD, employment, that's the least that we can do for that community. So I want to thank my colleagues for pushing forward and supporting that budget. Really appreciate it. I want to talk briefly about the budget process. I want to thank Madam, I'm sorry, Chairwoman Dow for conducting the hearings and the process. There's been a lot of discussion in media recently about an independent council, and I think, moving forward with the budget, there needs to be more independence. And I long for the day when the City Council puts forward its own budget with its priorities, and the executive branch puts theirs, and then we negotiate. There is a semblance of independence that's brewing in this council. Don't be afraid to embrace it. Stand up. Invest Southwest. I think we're almost four years into that program. I think it's a great program, but I think that this body can chew gum and walk at the same time, and I think it's time to start taking a look at Invest Northwest, Southwest, Southeast Side as well, so that way we can begin to invest in some of these other corridors that are struggling. We can do that. In this budget is the $1.8 billion capital bill, year three of a five-year program. We've got to find out what has the city done with those investments in the first two years and what it plans to do with the next two years. And to that point, I'll be hosting hearings in my committee to talk about that. I think it's important that we make sure that we're actually investing in the bread and butter issues that our communities are consistently coming to our office about, sidewalks, curbs, and gutters. Those are not the fancy projects that people like to cut a ribbon around, but those are everyday necessities that our constituents are asking for and, quite frankly, they deserve. IT investments. This city has got to get more aggressive on looking at IT investments. There are tons of savings that we can find, and I look forward to working with the Commissioner, the new Commissioner of AAS, to identify those savings. We cannot continue, moving forward, to go to taxpayers, to ask for more revenue, when I know for a fact that there's revenue in this budget with the investments of IT. So I'm going to be really pushing the IT department to identify these savings, because I know they're there, whether it's time and attendance of $50 million a year, whether it's going to the cloud for CPD to save another $50 million a year. And those are just the low-hanging fruit. If we really challenge the city departments and find out how they did their, delivered their services, I bet you we can find some efficiencies. I want to thank the Commissioners that are all here today. Thank you for the tremendous job that you do for the city. I want to thank the Mayor's Budget Team for putting forward a strategy or a pathway to get us to that upgrade, and that it wasn't easy. There's a lot of work to do still. There's a lot of good things in this budget, but I think we missed a couple of things as well, easy things to bring other colleagues along. But that comes from communication and compromise, and I think we need to do that more. Let's not let what's occurring in Washington, D.C., occur here. We have the fringes that are talking the loudest. Let's work with one another. So I want to thank my colleagues again for the budget amendment around Veteran Affairs and also the capital bill, so for that reason, I'll be a yes.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank our city workers that were a part of this process and to thank all of the department's leadership for their engagement in our budget. the department's leadership for their engagement in our budget discussion. I'd also like to thank Chairwoman Pat Dow for presiding over this year's budget hearings. You have done great work in keeping us focused and informed. I commend you for your patience, your discipline, and endurance in chairing these hearings, and I am proud to serve with you. To Susie Park and Jenny Bennett from the Office of Budget and Management, I want to thank you both for your work crafting this budget. It is even more inspiring to see women, and women of color at that, like yourselves, leading our city. I thank you for all the work that you do, even as I will be voting no on this budget. There are a number of things in this budget that can be commended, especially for me, the $242 million going towards our pension debt, but as my colleague Maria Haddan stated, and as we have heard from so many across our great city, it is not enough. I'd like to thank my colleagues who have engaged in this year's budget processes and our caucuses for articulating their priorities before budget negotiations. In both the Latino and progressive caucuses, which I'm a member of, we articulated our priorities, members communicated what we wanted. We communicated that we wanted to see a Department of Environment reestablished, to work together to get an increase in the real estate transaction tax for property transactions above $1 million as articulated in the Bring Chicago Home movement, to see an expansion of the social worker mobile crisis response to more than four out of, to more than four out of 22 police districts in the city as identified in the Treatment Not Trauma ordinance. We also all asked for an increase in staffing to get just one more full-time position per ward office, knowing that after COVID, our staffs, which comprise the front-facing part of government, deal with exponentially more requests related to trauma, rehousing, domestic disputes, and violence. Each ward has an average of 54,000 neighbors to serve with only three full-time positions in our offices. In addition, thanks to the work of the staff in our 40th Ward Office, three months before this vote, I communicated our asks of this budget to our mayor and staff. In that communication, I prioritized a $2 million investment in language access services because of the experience in trying to resolve issues in our office and the city for those who do not understand or feel comfortable speaking English, a $5 increase in permitting fees for street work to improve our city's shy street work website backend system so that we could best communicate to our constituents, an expansion of the demolition surcharge pilot so as to preserve naturally occurring affordable housing rather than the teardowns that lead to million-dollar homes and lower our housing stock for those who need it. I asked for detailed information on how the violence prevention dollars we voted for last year were allocated and how the cannabis tax revenue had been spent. This is important as we see reporting that a majority of federal funds we have received have not been spent, and we see that violence prevention investment is needed now more than ever in our history. Out of the long list of asks that I just named, there were a total of zero that were met or seriously negotiated in this budget. In total, our office submitted 97 questions through the Chair to get answers in advance of this budget vote. We received about 20 responses total. Instead, we were told this is an easy budget during a fourth year in a term, that the removal of a property tax increase made this easy, that it was, in effect, expedient to support this budget without any true and meaningful negotiation. As our sister Jeanette Taylor so powerfully stated over a year ago, "Don't give me crumbs and tell me it's cake." In the most recent weeks, a number of members of this council advocated for the creation or the reestablishment of the Department of the Environment as something that could be accomplished simply by allocating 10 of the hundreds of vacancies across city departments to formally reestablish the department in the municipal code. We all agreed that there would be further work to do after that, but that naming and codifying the shared vision of so many groups, neighbors, and council members is vital, tangible, and could have been done in this budget. After conversations with the administration, where our goal was clearly articulated, a department with a commissioner, the best this administration could do is to create an Office of the Environment and Climate Equity to do much of the same work with an officer at the helm. The argument and pushback we received was that the work being done was the same, so why be so stuck on the words "department" and "commissioner?" The counterargument is a simple one also. If it's just a word, "department," why not make the change to establish a "department" and "commissioner?" The answer is because offices issue recommendations while departments create rules that are enforceable by law. The best analogy here to illustrate the difference would be the Office of the Inspector General, which recently recommended that a police officer found to have affiliated with a white supremacist group be removed from the force. They issued a recommendation that went ignored. Similarly, an Office of the Environment could issue recommendations, and similarly, they could be ignored. So this wasn't a negotiation about the mere words "department" or "office," but about power, and a mayor's want to keep power centralized rather than accountable to an equal branch of government as represented by the City Council. This is also indicative of what we have seen this whole term, and is unfortunate when the public wants to see a functioning municipal government in a time of so many challenges that we were unable to do so. We, as a city, deserve better, and every neighbor and taxpayer in our city deserves better. That is why I must vote no on this budget. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Kappelman. We're coming to the end, folks.
Thank you, Madam President. After Franciscan Order, I became a teacher, but it was pretty evident I was going to be fired for being gay, so I became a social worker. And that's where I really became entrenched in this whole use of evidence-based best practices, data-driven, data-driven, data-driven. It's in my blood. It's, questions I ask in City Council are all focused on evidence-based best practices. I tell people, the way to get to me to change my mind on anything, let's talk about evidence-based best practices. Let's talk about data. In 2019, the city spent $12 million on city-funded mental health services. In 2022, $89 million. In 2019, we served 3,651 people in the mental health clinics. Today, 60,000 people receive services in mental health care, and next year, we project to have 75,000 people. This is important to me, not only because of my past history with my family with mental illness, but all of us. I don't, I'm not alone in this. All of us know someone experiencing mental illness, and that's why it's so vital that we're doing that. The amount that we're doing is amazing, and we need to keep doing more. In 2019, 13 organizations were funded. In 2022, 50 organizations are funded. And they too, because of mental health care, because in the, mental health, we're focused on evidence-based best practices. These are organizations that get it. They know how to provide services. They know outcome measures. In 2019, 11 neighborhoods had mental health services. By the end of this year, all 77 neighborhoods will be receiving agencies that provide mental health care. That is huge. You and I met June 15, and we talked about homelessness. That's my focus. That's the focus of many people in this room, and I'm glad to see it's a focus of many people who are attending this meeting, because homelessness is an issue across this planet, and so Chicago's no different. One of the reasons why I spent my full $100,000 on Michael Grant was because of homelessness. It's clear we need to do more. This year, we will be providing 1,200 units of rapid rehousing. That's a 400-unit increase. These are individuals who, many of them have been living on the streets for years, and we know that they are at high risk for dying. They have a 25% mortality rate for dying in the streets. So we're housing this group. We're funding rehab to shelters so that they can go from being a congregate shelter to a non-congregate shelter. Now, for many of you who don't know their difference, think about you experiencing homelessness and living in a large room filled with other people. It's much safer, you will feel much safer, and it controls infections, to have smaller rooms. That gives an element of safety, and it's ideal for families because it allows parents to be the providers, protectors, and nurturers of their children if they're in a smaller space. That was huge for me. We're spending $2 million for the outliers, for people experiencing homelessness, and all of us in this room, we all know someone in our ward who's been very reluctant to receive services, and that reluctance is real. It's very real for them. They may have issues of paranoia, and paranoia is an awful thing to experience. And so the idea that we're spending money for this group of people, these are people who go to the ERs a lot, these are people who cycle in and out of Cook County Jail, not only will we save their lives, but we save taxpayer money by providing these services. What is near and dear to my heart, and Mayor, you and I talked about this, I wanted funding for a low-barrier shelter. Low-barrier shelter is different from other shelters because many people who are living on the streets saying they don't want to go to shelter for many reasons. They may have an unmarried partner. They may have lots of possessions that they can't take to a shelter. They may have a pet that is part of their own family, and they can't take this pet to a shelter. A low-barrier shelter does it, and it's driven by evidence-based best practices. When we talked June 15, I mentioned Anise Parker. She's the former mayor of Houston. She was written up in New York Times. She's done an incredible job of addressing homelessness, and one of the reasons is because she, she and her wife, they have fostered a number of kids. They adopted one child who had been living on the streets, and that's where she learned, that's why her focus was on addressing homelessness. And I am pleased that we are talking, DFS, Department of Public Health, we're talking to Houston, we're talking to other cities across this country because we're focused on the use of evidence-based best practices. We have a mobile crisis response team now that can respond to people who are at crisis for freezing to death so that they can get shelter. That is also extraordinarily important. Saint Vincent de Paul once said, "It's not enough to do good, it must be done well." And when I was elected in 2011, we were trying, but we weren't doing it well. I see now a commitment for us to doing it well, and because of that, I will be supporting this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Kappelman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rabois.
I got to move the mic because I usually bury it, Madam President, because I never speak, but I feel like I need to say something. Although I don't know that anyone has said it, no budget is perfect. We know that. But I do, I do think that we're moving in the right direction. Don't worry, George, it's not a congressional speech. But I appreciate what you said earlier, George, because Class of Oh 3 is leaving, and Harry, and maybe some others. But I want to congratulate, and I think of my colleagues who have spoken already, and I support everything that you've said. You made sense. We want to hear that. We do, but not all happens in one year. We need to look forward. I want to thank our Chairperson Dow and our budget folks that are here today for the work that you've done. I commend you for that. I commend the mayor. One thing that we need to look forward to as Chairman of Immigration and Refugee Rights is that we need a better plan to help out the asylum seekers. Madam President, we need to get the dollars from the federal government to support us because we need to fix that situation, and we need to fix it fast. There's no doubt that we need a better plan, and we need to support our police department. They need help. We need help. The city, public safety, needs help. We need to secure all sectors of the city of Chicago, not just downtown, the neighborhoods as well, but we need to make the right decisions on that one. And we talk about investment in the Southwest, we should also talk about the Northwest investment. And I want to thank Department of Planning and Development for working with me and our community because we are investing in the Northwest. Look at the site Belmont Triangle, soon to be spoken of, and I commend you for that, Madam Chair, Madam President. But the most hot topics that we got in the city of Chicago is public safety, and we need to assist our fire department. They're the first ones that are there, following the police officers. The housing, the needy, the folks that need the housing, especially our seniors, let's not forget our seniors and our OEMC office, they're the ones that stood up front when the asylum seekers were here. Thank you to Chairman Gaitis for doing that. Great job. Again, I want to thank each and every one of the department heads that are here. This is the last time that I speak in city government, and I thank you for that. And I wish a lot of luck to our colleagues that'll be remaining here, and I really mean But in 44 years in city government, I've seen a lot. Not everything is perfect, ladies and gentlemen. We're moving in the right direction, and I thank you all for taking the challenge to continue working this job. But I want to ask the federal government, President of the United States, our governor of Illinois, our mayor and the superintendent of police, let the police officers do his or her job. We need them with us. We need help behind them. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Tunny.
Thank you, Madam President, and I rise not in support of this budget. A couple of years ago, we had, I voted against the budget for a number of reasons. First was a bonding program of $1.2 billion that was really not articulated as to how this money was going to be spent. Secondarily, I felt as a North Side Alderman and an Alderman of the 44th Ward that our police resources were being diminished, and it still is, but I'll get into that in a second. And then, thirdly, I did not support an annual property tax increase that was tied to CPI. I think we should all take that tough vote when it's appropriate. So with that being said, we're two years later, and let me talk about the bonding. So we're asking, in addition to the $1.2, to another $1.7, so close to $3 billion, which really has not been articulated, managed, audited, reflected on a citywide basis. You know, I've asked for projects through the Budget Chair, and I got a series, maybe about eight to 10 of them, without any price tag with them. In fact, half of the, half of the projects were, unfortunately, grading of sidewalks into polling places. Now, I have spent 20 years working on sidewalks, and I've seen the same sidewalks being torn up around my schools. Sometimes it's for internet, and sometimes we did it for capital with our schools, and lo and behold, is in front of our Nettle Horse School, we got a utility, we got a utility repaired the sidewalk, and two weeks later, the sidewalk was torn up because it didn't meet the grade. I tried to tell the inspectors that you got to work with the graders because utilities are not talking to CDS, and our public way department is pretty woefully inadequate. So we're going to spend more, so $3 billion without real accountability. And I said before that our debt load in the city of Chicago is not something to be proud of, and you're seeing ultra-low interest rates, but those interest rates are not the future. And so while the original money has not been spent, we've seen inflation, we've seen lack of workers to do the job, and obviously, lack of supervision. And I really feel that we need to do the first set of bonding before we go out and spend spend twice as much more. The second I want to talk about, a number of our colleagues have talked about the police department. I think we have a real lack of leadership. It's not the fact that we're spending money. We are spending probably between $2 and $2.5 billion. We are probably spending more per capita than any other city of Chicago. My residents don't feel safe. They don't feel their money is worth it, and my police officers' morale is at an all-time low. You know it, everybody knows it, whether it's the West Side, or the South Side, or the North Side. People do not go out at night anymore. I mean, what kind of city are we living in with this kind of police, lack of resources? Our police are not getting, they're working overtime, their scheduled shifts are off. You talk to a police officer, and they're waiting until their retirement is ready, they're counting their days. And that is really, in my opinion, a lack of leadership. It's not about the money. It's how we are investing in our police officers, recruiting, no, more importantly, retaining. It's like, come on, folks, we need everybody. But no matter what we're recruiting, and I see that there's budgets, you know, that we're going to do the best, we're still not, we're still down 1,000 officers from a couple of years ago. So let me tell you a little bit about the 19th District, of which I represent. We have a 25% decrease of police officers. I voted for a budget years ago that got, under the Emanuel administration, that got us up to 415 officers in the 19th District. We are now, even with the last 11 slots, they're supposedly coming to 19, we're 285. And I'm sure, in the budget, we've seen all the different departments. So we are definitely in a crisis. It's not a money crisis. It really is, in my opinion, a lack of leadership. And we have to do better to keep our city safe. We want our city to grow. We want our businesses to feel safe when they open their door, or close their door, or their employees to try to go home. They don't feel it. And if we do not, if we do not promote city as a safe city and have confidence in our ability to move the best city, what we all think, in America forward, we've got to do it feeling that people can be safe, businesses can be safe, and families will not leave. I don't even want to get to talk about public education because it's really not necessarily part of today's budget. But I'm telling you, we also have CPS enrollment at all-time low. You know how that affects our funding. We have people saying there's not enough good high schools, neighborhood high schools. I took a vote for a property tax increase, and I got $25 million for Lakeview High School to make sure it was a competitive neighborhood high school. We had COVID. I still think we're on the right way. So I'm not afraid to take a vote to increase taxes, but I demand accountability for the residents that I serve. And they feel short-changed, to say the least. I've been working the streets the last years, but let's say, more importantly, in the last month, two months. And people are disgusted about their inability to go out and walk their dog or entertain at night. And there's something wrong. It's not the money, and we're increasing the budget again. And you know, ironically, you know, I see the budget, there's 100 or so positions for constitutional policing. But yet, what was it, about six weeks ago, we fired the head of constitutional policing? Where are our priorities here? This department is fully funded, under-motivated, and not doing the job to keep the city safe. And I just feel I cannot continue to perpetuate this kind of budget without speaking my mind. And this will be my last budget. I'm also part of the class of 2003. The last thing I want to say is, on this property tax, okay, so pensions are the biggest part of our property taxes. And what has happened, if you asked our CFO, what has happened is that we were so, our returns were so mediocre that we were going into the principal, which is a death knell of pensions. So the bonding agencies, according to my context, say, if we don't put extra money into there, you know, we're not going to be sustained. And while we're saying that we're, it was a tick up, we're still, what, 27% funded? So we're going to have a property tax increase. Y'all don't want to have it on election year? Okay? We're going to have it. Okay? And we're going to see the returns this coming year, not the returns over the last four or five years. And with that, you know, we're going to bite the bullet, and the next council is going to have to raise our taxes. And, you know, part of the situation right now is, as Harry Osterman said, you know, we haven't gotten our tax bills, ironically, you know, until after November 8th, but we're going to pay two tax bills before the next city council election. And I know the people in my ward do not feel they're getting, they're getting a return on their investment. And I'm very worried about the direction of our city and our leadership in our, in our police department. I think most of the departments that I've worked with have been, have been great. I work hard, I try to deliver services, I try to improve the quality of life for every citizen in Chicago, but specifically for the 44th Ward. And I feel, I feel pained that I will not be voting for this budget, but I have to do what's in the best interests of my ward and my city, and therefore, I'll be voting no. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Tunny. And the Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and good afternoon, members of the city council. It's refreshing to see so many have their come-to-Jesus moment now that we're at the final hour of our tenure here. But I rise today to reiterate once again my concerns about these budgets. Last year, I said this was the biggest spending spree imaginable. $16 billion, with nearly $2 billion from the federal government. Plenty of opportunity for us to help everyone that we ever wanted to help and everyone we couldn't even imagine helping as of yet. Last year's budget was hailed as a progressive win, despite the fact that it had over $600 million in borrowing to fund things like affordable housing, access to the internet, address, environmental justice, climate change, and even the vacant lots that we heard people talk about, as well as help small businesses get out from under the pandemic. And yet today, we hear from so many saying that while all of those headlines were great to grab last year, what would have been better would have actually served those individuals whom this body set the priority to help. We didn't do it then, and I have no confidence in thinking that we're going to do it this time. To be perfectly honest, as you look through this budget, and more specifically, for what everyone didn't get, when you look through this document, we find that this administration has presented the city council a budget that has almost 20% bloat because of all of the vacancies across all the departments. And if you don't believe me, all you have to do is look on the last page in your tabs to see just what departments have. And you see why the functionality of government has been so poor over the last year. When you have departments like the Department of Housing operating almost with a third of the positions vacant, that's a problem. When our own finance team, which is part of enforcement, 25% vacant, that's a problem. When our own human resources department is 38% vacant, and we wonder why we can't hire anybody, that's a problem. Procurement, we hear from the concerned citizen all the time about contracts for people throughout the city, particularly for African Americans, when that department is 42% vacant, that is a problem. But you know what the bigger problem is, despite all of the departments that have vacancies in the double digits? Is the fact that we are charging taxpayers every single year to fund it, short of calling it a theft of service. I don't know what you call that, because we're asking them for, we're asking our taxpayers to pay for things that we are never going to fulfill. That is what this budget is. That's what last year's budget was, and we cannot continue down this path. It costs taxpayers an extra $3 billion for all of that vacancy. You're talking about whether or not we should have inflationary tax increases for the next 50 years, which many of you voted for, when you can actually purge these documents and give our taxpayers a rebate for the services we have no intention of providing them. It is shameful that we are here again. It is disgusting that we are still promoting this myth of the feel-good nonsense that we're trying to do, when in fact, the execution of this budget falls squarely on one individual who has no intention of providing the services that so many people need, to the moral guidelines that we have pushed for, that many of you have pushed for, to ensure that you're helping people when they need it most, to making sure that you're helping provide the housing, making sure you're providing mental health, making sure you're providing help and relief to businesses. It's great to say we're going to do it until we don't. It's great to say that we're going to promote all of these things and grab those wonderful headlines and do those wonderful shovelings until nothing is created, until we're left holding the bag of more and more empty promises. Ladies and gentlemen, I urge you to vote no on this budget, because it's one thing to say that we're going to help, but it's another to actually do it. And we have seen time and time again, where good intentions pave the way to only one location. And we're in that location now, seeing the fact that everything that we say we're going to do, we do not. Saying everyone that we're going to help, we won't. Everything that we're building for, we turn our backs to. We can do better. You all can do better in this council. You've set the tone for the priorities you want, but yet, here we are, talking about everything that we didn't get last time and are not going to get again. It's time this body says enough. It's time these chairmen of this body stand up and hold people accountable. We know Chicagoans will hold us accountable, but at the end of the day, this smoke-and-mirrors, dog-and-pony show's got to come to an end. Business as usual has failed the city of Chicago. We've had an opportunity, a historic opportunity, to help our citizens, to help our businesses, to help our communities, not once but twice, thanks to the federal government, and we turned our back on everyone that we could have helped. We chose to pay off debt in the short term, when so many of our businesses were struggling, when so many of our hotel workers, restaurant workers, and everyone else was looking for help because they were called essential by every single person in this room, and yet we did nothing for them. Send this budget back. Send the priorities that you want, but also send the message that you demand the execution of your conscience through this budget to this administration. That is the only way things change, because otherwise, we will have to address the fact that we continue to steal from the taxpayers while providing no service that we promise. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. Not going to give a whole lot of remarks, a lot of my sentiments have already been said, and I'm certainly not going to lecture all of you how to read a budget or how to vote on it, but I do think I owe you an explanation on how I plan to. Just in the last week, the administration suggested that if Alderman vote against this budget, we are somehow anti-police. And as a pro-police, pro-Lon order Alderman, I find that statement to be intellectually dishonest and wrong. Just because Alderman identified major flaws in the administration's budget does not mean they are against every aspect or program within that budget. Let's be clear, there are flaws in this budget. It invests in programs failing to show a return on investment. It lavishes money on departments to give career bureaucrats significant pay raises. It gives two of the three citywide elected officials a 23% pay raise, and puts all three citywide officials on a schedule to receive annual pay raises. This budget does not adequately address the need to retain police officers through the bonuses and housing assistance programs that we've been advocating for all year. I could go on and on, but the list of deficiencies in this budget is long. My support for our police officers is absolutely no relationship to the mayor or her election year budget. I'm one of the voices on city council who consistently stands up for our police officers and who advocates for things important to their success, providing guaranteed personal time off to get a break from the stresses of the job, to be with family, co-sponsoring or after ordinances with my colleagues, aimed at providing officers with more assistance, better tools and technology, and the wellness support they need and deserve. In fact, I was the first Alderman on the council to invest menu money in license plate reader technology. Why? Because the cops in my district asked for it, and I trust them. Automatic menu money was paid for those cameras, and what didn't come out of CDOT, or Office of Emergency Management, it came through a discretionary menu program. Like every budget I voted on during my tenure on the city council, this budget proposal includes lots of good investments and funding for important and successful programs. And like every budget I voted on, this budget also contains a number of appropriations that I fundamentally disagree with. At the end of the day, it's my job to sort through the entirety of this budget proposal and weigh through the good versus the bad. It's not personal, and it's certainly not attack on the mayor. It's me doing my job and voting my conscience in the best interests of my constituents and taxpayers. Been advocating for additional police helicopters for years now, many of us have, and I'm happy to see funding for two in the 2023 budget. Frankly, they should have been funded in the first year of this administration's budget, not the last during an election year. I'm also happy to hear the department is now prioritizing police hiring. Recruitment is incredibly important. Why wasn't this a priority in the administration's first budget instead of its last? Very little of CPD's budget is focused on police retention efforts. You've heard that from other colleagues. And calls from city council members to make retention a priority have been largely ignored. Retention bonuses, housing assistance, signing bonuses, guaranteed time off, more mental health and wellness assistance, all of that is absent from this election year budget in a meaningful way. This budget funds the downtown police districts that combined are down nearly 400 police officers since 2019. More police cars are great to see, replacing our aging fleet and having new, better vehicles is good. But those aren't going to do us much good if we don't have the cops to drive them. So I want to underline some of those public safety issues that exist. I also, speaking of safety, want to talk about the CTA. Many of us have been sounding the alarm bells about the status of our public safety on our transit system, and I've been one of the largest critics of the current program. This budget sends more money to the CTA. We're investing more Chicago tax dollars in a failing transit system that is not only unreliable, it's unsafe. What does the city have to show for its continued subsidies of this sister agency that is only accountable to the mayor and not to us? I'd argue we have nothing to show for those city subsidies. The head of that agency was given a massive raise, $377,000 a year, not to show up for us. During the police budget hearing two weeks ago, I went through the police staffing levels for public transit systems in other big cities, and I'll give you some statistics real quick as a reminder. New York City has 3,500 transit officers dedicated to their public transit system, 10% of their 35,000-strong police force. Boston, a city a fraction of our size, has more than 300 transit cops. Houston, our superintendent's hometown, 350 transit officers plus 65 civilian positions. Here in Chicago, any given day, across shifts, we have a grand total of 150 transit cops on our system. If CPD dedicated the same percentage of their work, of their force as New York City does, we would have over 1,000. does, we would have over 1,000 transit cops keeping our system safe. Just five years ago, because this is doable, just five years ago, we had 800 transit cops on our system. It can be done. So what do we have to show for this CTA investment? A system plagued by service disruptions, delay, crime, and filth. Ridership scared to death to use our train system after rush hour and many more scared to use it during rush hour. Drug use, violence, sexual assault, strong armed robberies, they're out of control and they become the norm. But please vote for a budget to subsidize this dumpster fire. I won't do it. So that said, I'll be planning on voting no. I am absolutely pro-police and voting no does not make me otherwise. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Riley. Next up, and I think the, well, next to the last series of speakers, the Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you so much, Mayor Lightfoot. You know, the budget vote is one of the most important votes that this council passes and considers every year. And it's times like this that I often think it's important for us to reflect what brought us here to this chamber. I don't know the reasons that led you to run for city council, but I know mine. I was born and raised in the city of Chicago. I love this city with all my heart. My mother immigrated here from Mexico as a child. My father migrated here as a young adult from Puerto Rico. They fell in love, they had three children, they worked for our Chicago Public Schools, they started a small business. This city made me who I am. It gave me and my family an opportunity to live the American dream. And I want every other child of Chicago to have the same opportunities that I had, thanks to the union jobs that my parents and grandparents had, thanks to the opportunities that they had in their neighborhood. And so when I saw our city headed in the wrong direction under Mayor Rahm Emanuel, when I saw the incumbent in my community voting to support Mayor Rahm Emanuel as he shuttered schools, as he shuttered mental health clinics, as I saw the perpetuation of a neoliberal ideology, and we have to talk about neoliberalism, we have to talk about what is the guiding ideology behind the decisions that we make. Many of you here probably remember Ronald Reagan. What did he famously say? Government isn't the solution, it's the problem. That is at the core of the neoliberal ideology. Rather than invest in systems of care where government workers go out and provide for the needs of our people, we have to cut salaries, we have to cut the number of people that work for government, we have to reduce the number of departments. That is what this city has been engaged in for decades, is a neoliberal project. And that project was on steroids under Mayor Rahm Emanuel as he cut budgets, as he got rid of the Department of the Environment. And what has the impact of this ideology been? What has been the impact of these cuts? What has been the impact of starving government and communities from the resources that they need? We see it every single day in our streets. As basic city services can't get done and constituents have to wait over a year for trees to be trimmed, as people suffer in our communities for lack of mental health care. Chicagoans voted for change when they brought this city council in, in 2019. They were promised a change in the direction at City Hall, that we would implement policies that would undo the harm caused by eight years of Mayor Rahm Emanuel. They were promised that we would bring back the Department of the Environment. They were promised that we would reopen the shuttered mental health clinics. They would promise that the city would create a dedicated stream of revenue to make sure that our unhoused neighbors had homes. In town halls, in community meetings, this mayor made promise after promise after promise to enact a policy agenda that would undo the harm that Mayor Rahm Emanuel caused and caused to by this council chamber, and that would instead begin to invest in the things that the people of the city of Chicago needed to thrive. We have now passed four budgets. The last budget, I voted for it because I thought we were getting on the right track. Thanks to an infusion of funding from the federal government, we were able to see a 72% increase budgeted in the city's public mental health staffing. I thought that was putting us on the right track towards finally in this budget, beginning to reopen at least one or two of the city's shuttered mental health clinics. Unfortunately, due to the actions of this administration, despite the fact that the last budget promised to increase the city's public mental health staffing by 72%, less than one-third of those positions were filled that we were promised in that budget last year. So when I see these talking points handed out that talk about the increase that we expect to see in different departments, it's difficult for me to believe it. Because last budget, we were promised a 72% increase in the city's public mental health staffing, and despite the fact that we got that included in the budget, only a third of those positions were ever filled. So it's very difficult to believe any of these promises contained in these talking points right here. We heard it discussed that the private mental health clinics that are providing services to Chicagoans that are receiving public funding to provide those services, that they report that they have provided services to 60,000 Chicagoans. Yet that number has never been independently verified. That number could include them handing out a stress ball to someone at a community fair. At the same time, everyone in this chamber, almost everyone unanimously fought to have a Department of the Environment. And yet we only get a 10-person office, fewer staff than what's budgeted for the mayor's press team. What does that tell you about our city's priorities? While people are dying in record heat waves, while people are seeing their livelihoods destroyed in record floods, we have less people to tackle the issue of the environment than we do to send out press releases. We had four years to undo the harm of Mayor Rahm Emanuel. I know myself and many of my colleagues submitted budget amendments to help this mayor get the job done. Reopening the shuttered mental health clinics, bringing back the Department of the Environment, making sure that the people of the city of Chicago had the things that they needed to thrive, to survive in every single neighborhood. So when I think about what brought me here to this chamber, to fight for the things that my community needs, I cannot vote for this budget. Because once again, it fails to ensure that the people of the city of Chicago have a robust city government that's not working against them, that's not ignoring them, but that's working with the people in our neighborhoods that are fighting to create the change that they need. The people of the city of Chicago are fighting. You saw some of them escorted out of this second floor today. I hope, I sincerely hope, that we as a city move away from broken promises, that we as a city move towards a future where we all have what we need to survive and thrive. Thank you.
All right, last three speakers. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Interesting conversation today around what we think, what we know, and what can be. Let's not forget that in any process, no one gets absolutely everything that is being asked for. But I will say this, that the work that our chairperson, Chairman Dow, the work that Budget Director Park, the work that our CFO, Jenny Bennett, and the Comptroller of Rest Marsonia has done to get us the information that we need to make meaningful and honest decisions has been great and their work is to be congratulated. But again, nobody gets everything that they want. As I drove downtown today, made it a point to drive down Fifth Avenue as I left my home, and there's a sign that says this, it says, "Everybody wants to get to heaven, but nobody wants to die." Most of us, I would think most of us want to get there, but it takes some work for us to make it. Now, many people put in requests, I know that a lot of the requests that we as the Automatic Black Caucus put in, we didn't get everything that we want. But again, moving in the right direction, we're looking at trying to be effective over efficient. But at some point, we've got to recognize and understand that again, where are we moving in a direction, and moving in a good direction? Of course, last year, we put a lot of items in the budget. I guarantee you right now, Superintendent Brown could snap his fingers and hire every vacancy in the department. It would be hired, it would be hired. The same thing for Dr. Arwood, the same thing for any commissioner that's out there. But the same challenges that the general economy face, we face. The same challenges in hiring people that companies tell us in our communities they face, we as government, we face those same things as well. So again, we're not immune to those issues as well. Again, COVID relief is a three-year program. Is all of the money out of the door? No, all of the money is out the door and quite as quiet as kept, some of the violence prevention money, we don't want out the door because some of it's not being effective. Again, effective. So again, if we have to take some time to understand the effectiveness of what it is that we're doing, not dealing in expediency and efficiency, again, we are charged here to be effective with resources for our community. Everyone talks about change, and to change happens to you. Change is hard. And people talk about, we want to return on investment while some of us are looking for investment. Because some communities in this city have had investment for years, but some communities in this city have not. And again, turning the cruise ship on a dime is hard. But again, that's something that our constituents voted for. As we continue to work, continue to do what is necessary to bring the reforms, to bring the effectiveness of government, it's not easy. And again, I think there is something in this document, I don't have the book Ray Hazard hold it up, there's something in that document that we can find to be supportive of the communities, supportive of the citizens, and supportive of this government. Is it perfect? We all know it's not perfect. But it's something that we can move toward and work toward to help citizens in this city. Now, is it everything? Of course not. But again, when we look at how effective we can be, I think that what is being proposed is putting us closer to being more effective in government than just expedient and efficient in government. We talked about the pension obligations. And again, as Alderman Tony talked about, we're still not where we need to be, but we're on a path to get to where we have to be. It's not, it's not something that we did that was wrong, well, some may argue that it is, but again, under the law, we did what we were supposed to do, but it was wrong still. But now we're paying for that. And I believe that the 200-plus million dollars that we're putting toward pension obligations is something that future councils won't have to still wrestle with. As again, getting back on a path. Because again, this was not done in one term or even two terms. This is something the city has dealt with since its infancy. So again, we're getting back on a path. I'm hopeful that while some people have decided to not be supportive, but I guarantee you, they'll ask, where is mine? At some point, we got to put the kids to bed. Lot of folks keep asking, asking, and asking. As I said, as I started this, everybody wants to go to heaven, but nobody wants to die. It's incumbent upon us to be, as we want to be honest brokers in what we do. We can't continue to ask and when things are delivered, still walk the other way. That's not right. And so for, while there are things that are here, while there are things that are beneficial for our citizens, I think it's incumbent upon us to support what is good for the whole. Again, it may not be everything that you want, but I believe it's something that we can live with to help move, continue moving forward. So I think that all of us need to understand, change is hard, but nonetheless, change is necessary for us to move our city forward. And again, nobody wants to die. Everybody wants to go, but nobody wants to die. I urge an I vote on this document. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Madonado.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I make my remarks, I want to really make a point of personal privilege, and that is that one of the members that I'm going to miss the most in this chamber is going to be Alderman Reboiras. And the reason for that is because I have a personal story to share with you. When I first came to Chicago back in 1978, as a young psychologist from Puerto Rico, aspiring to come here and do my PhD, I crashed in my brother's apartment. Who did I find? Alderman Reboiras. He used to be, he used to be my brother's, he used to be my brother's, my brother's roommate. And it is true, I crashed because I did not pay rent. I came broke from Puerto Rico, came with $300, couldn't pay any rent. He had money because he had an illegal operation selling.
That's a statute, Ron!
Let me finish, let me finish. Selling hats and part of an area just next to the Wrigley Field. He was a peddler, selling unofficial items outside of Wrigley Field. And he used to live three apartments north of Wrigley Field, that's where we used to live. And guess who used to be the head of security for Wrigley Field at the time? Former Alderman Suarez. That every, at every game, during every game, he used to come out and chase him out. Notwithstanding that, we were, thanks to him and to the graciousness of my brother, rest in peace, they gave me free room and board during that time until I was able to go on my own. You know, it is true that we all, as residents of the city, the number one, when you ask what's the number one problem in the city of Chicago that you are facing or experiencing, most people, the first thing that pops in their mind is public safety. People, whether it's real or perceived, they do not feel safe. Whether you can provide them with the facts or not, that where they live might be safe in relation to other parts of the city, they still don't feel safe. But there is another act of violence that we barely talk about. And that is the real, and that is the lack of affordable housing in our city. That lack of affordable housing leads us to housing insecurity. And I, and we all know that, and this, that this is the cause of by and large displacement and gentrification. Many of our wards are experiencing aggressive gentrification and displacement. My ward, the 26th Ward, we've been subject of that since the mid-'90s. It is sad that I lost 10,000, 8,000 people in my ward during the last, in the, as a result of the last count, in the most recent census. 6,000 Latinos and 2,000 African-Americans. Do you think that those 8,000 people left the ward by choice? No. They left because of gentrification and because of displacement. And that is, and if that is not an act of violence, I don't know what it is. That's why my focus is in fighting to bring affordable housing to my ward. I can say that as we speak, during this term of this mayor, we are building in my ward 340 affordable housing units for working families. And we have the potential of bringing an additional 900 units in the next four years. That is the only way that we can really reduce the flight of our working families from the city of Chicago. So that our working families do not have to take a train from the So that our working families do not have to take a train from the suburbs, come into the city of Chicago to work and going back home. That's not right. That's not fair. And who are they? People who are displaced and gentrified are, they are all, 99% of them, African-Americans and Latinos. We are the victims of gentrification. And to me, that is the most resilient act of violence that we are experiencing in our ward, more so than carjackings, more so than armed robberies, more so than shootings. And I have to tell you that under this administration is the, this has been the only administration, and I have served under three mayors, this is the only administration that really has helped my working families to stay in the ward. And also, this is the first time in four, uh, proposed budget that there is not a property tax increase in this budget. And that's why I feel very proud and very confident and very much at ease to say that I'm very willing and will vote for this budget. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Chairman Wagonback.
Thanks, Madam President. First, I just want to say, Ariel, the statute of limitations probably already ran, so you're safe. But Madam President, I am proud to support this budget. Over the last several months, working with Chairwoman Dowell, working with our colleagues, we've seen a lot of back and forth about a lot of different issues throughout this budget. Some holdovers from the pandemic. And let's not forget, we are still in a pandemic. We might be coming out of it. I think we're coming out on top. But like every other city and municipality in the United States, we are suffering through a time that is unlike any in our lifetime. In 2008, '09, when the housing market collapsed, we got back on our feet with a very strong budget, but that one was similar to this. It was supported by a strong federal investments. And we had a timeframe in which to spend those dollars. And I think we've done a good job as a council and with the mayor to make sure that this gets done in the right way. We've had our department heads working with us very closely after the, over the last several months. They've had their workers coming back to the offices, but it's been a struggle. It's been a struggle for everybody. I just think that this budget is a result of good collaboration and good compromise on a myriad of issues. We're not going to get everything that we asked for. But this budget is a sound and solvent budget for the future of this city. No, it doesn't include any new taxes, and we did forego the CPI increase. But at some point, we're going to have to come back and ask for taxpayers for more because that's what governments do. That's how we operate. We have to pay property taxes. We have to pay fines and fees that keep cities going. And we're not the only ones that do it. Every city does it. The city budget continues to invest in building a safer, more equitable Chicago. Look what's happening in the South and the West parts of the city. I can, I can build and I can develop the 32nd Ward with my eyes closed because developers have been coming there for years. They want to invest there. But it takes an effort to push those investments to the other parts of the city that frankly have been divested from for decades, in large part because of choices made here. But this administration, as Alderman Maldonado just stated, is the first one to really push and to make sure that we have those investments in the parts of the city that have been dependent on the rest of us to make sure that they can get the things that they need. And by building up Alderman Mitz Ward and watching her smile when she sees a project go through over the last year with the investments that she needs is a great thing. Seeing the people that come to us and say, will you invest those TIF dollars in this project? Absolutely. And all of us voted for it in the Finance Committee, where we voted on, in the budget. We need to continue to do that. We've also been working toward a structural solution to improve the health of the city's pension funds. Our budget continues the progress with advanced payments toward future pension contributions on top of what we regularly pay. This cuts future costs for pensions and frees up money for more services that we want. A lot of us know that debt and pensions are the two biggest drivers of what we pay for property taxes. That needs to change. So while we're doing this, we are improving the fiscal footing of this city and reducing those borrowing costs. It's expected that the city's future pension contributions will be reduced by over $2 billion over time, and we will have rating agencies continue to do what they're doing over the last couple of weeks. Fitch Ratings gave us the first upgrade in over two decades. To me, that says a lot about the plans that we've implemented over the last year and over the last three. We've earned this upgrade, and I think that continued collaboration will send us down that right path. But what else has happened in this budget over the last year? We've had a 12-week paid parental leave for our employees, keeping our young employed workers, our workers here in the city, wanting to work for a city that supports their families. We have funds for violence reduction, so it's not just about police. And we can go in circles about what the police are doing or what they're not doing. But we all know it's just not, it's not our police department alone that is the issue here. It's like a three-legged stool or more. Once state legislation passes, the police enforce, the state's attorney prosecutes, and the judges are supposed to adjudicate. And we know that's not happening across the board. So our police department's sitting on a three-legged stool that's teetering. It's teetering because they have to follow the consent decree. They have to follow all the things that we want them to implement. They, we want them there, we want them here, we're telling police where to go every day. So I think the investments that we see in this budget are supporting the police department. Investments in the camera system, investments in their mental health, investments in their families when they do commit suicide, investments for all of our first responders have gone up, and we need to do more in next year's budget. We've also seen funding for mental health services increase. And I think over time, we will see the different models that have been proposed increase in their efficiency, but we're still in an experimental mode. We've seen affordable housing expansion. Again, just looking to Alderman Mitz and Alderman Maldonado, just as they speak about the projects that they see coming, we want those too. Am I satisfied with Department of Planning and Development and Housing when I don't get the projects I want off the ground, up and running very quickly? No, I'm not. But we've got to keep pushing for those. The budget also includes millions of dollars for reproductive health access. While many parts of our country are rolling that back, Chicago is investing and supporting women. And we now have an Office for Environment that is called Climate and Environmental Equity, not too different from the word environment. Equity that did not exist for many decades in this city is getting us on the right footing. But the work on this issue didn't hold back our efforts on what we're trying to do to clean up this city. It has actually progressed. If you recall earlier this year, the city was in the process of planting several thousand trees, beautifying neighborhoods, especially those that have lost trees over the decades. We've mitigated the urban heat island and worked on lead pipe replacement, all sorts of things that are going to get us to a city that I believe will be one of the most environmental-friendly for years to come. Amidst all the clamor of the pandemic, we have a sound and strong budget here to vote on today. Finally, Madam President, I want to say thank you to first Chairwoman Dowell and watching as she took us through the last few weeks of the budget process and every month before that. It's incredible to see her determination and ability to rein in people and make sure that we're moving this budget forward and being heard throughout the whole process. I also want to thank the women who led us in this challenge on the mayor's side. The mayor, Reshma Soni, our comptroller, and I know you've gone through some difficult times, but I think you've done an incredible job working with us to make sure we got things like the Workers' Comp Program moving in the right direction, having audits that are going to move us in the right direction. I also want to say thanks to Budget Director Susie Park, Chief Financial Officer Jenny Wang Bennett, and all of their staff, some of whom are here today. These are a few of the high-level professionals in our local government, with their combined experience have navigated us through this pandemic and will continue to do so in the future. So finally, I wanted to thank the committee staff for budget. They did a fantastic job providing answers. I think with the, I can't, Chairwoman Dowell, you'll probably mention it, but I lost track of the number of how many came through with answers. But we cannot get this job done without them and all the work that they do. So with that, Madam President, I want to reiterate my support for this budget and look forward to its passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Originally, I wasn't going to say anything until Alderman Wagonback kept mentioning my name. And it was in a good way, and I think we need some good news right now. So when you call and say the projects, I smile again. And I want to tell you, I'm happy. I am happy. 23 years of serving in the city council, and to have as many projects that are going on in 37th Ward now. And if you haven't noticed, I'll just give you a little snapshot, and so you could just be happy with me. If you had a heart to be happy and not begrudge hearted, Alderman Barnett, don't hate on me. Don't hate on me. On the west side of Chicago right now, I haven't seen a crane up in so long, and I just keep seeing the cranes in the air, and the community is seeing some hope. Hope in terms of economic development. Hope in terms of what you all did, not just myself. You need to be happy because you played a part in this joint public safety training academy that's built out there. And I can't wait till you see what we're going to be doing for our first responders here in the city of Chicago. It's something that they need so badly. I can see when they step their first feet in the door, the newness. It's going to change their thinking. It changed mine. And let me tell you, you know, you remember the backlash we was getting, the No Cop Academy? And I had to endure that. And one of my colleagues here in the council says, Alderman Mitz, I don't know how you handle that. Hey, you take a lot of abuse. It's nothing like the abuse from where I came from, I can tell you that much. Remember my history? I came from the South. We had 30 acres of trees over in our area, been there for 40 years. 30 acres, you all. And here we are without resources. And all you had to do is cut the trees down. That's what they did in the South and took the land, cut them down here. So we're going to take the land and have some for our neighborhood. And now, not honored with the public safety, a mock city. And just so you know what a mock city is, that's the area where they're going to build for our first responders to go in and train, scenario houses, that they can actually do live training. And then next to it, the Boys and Girls Club, I was there Saturday. All these young men's and women's teenagers who are out being a part of the development for their own house, walking in the door, now we're on concrete floor, just sand and dirt, and sooner or later, they're going to see their whole building being transformed in the next six months. That's awesome. That's something for them to see. Then I began to talk to them about those construction jobs. But since they can't believe that those guys out there was making a hundred dollars an hour, I wanted to let them know that they could do that work too. Got to catch them while they're young, so now they can see these things on these tours. And then we got the Peaches and Clovis Restaurant. I got the Amazon. I got the terminal where we got the world's third, world-class company, Ericu, who came in, could have went anywhere else in the world, found their way out there on the west side of Chicago, 37th Ward. And then I understand from them that President Biden wanted them to look for some cure, try to find something for the cure pancreatic cancer. Wouldn't there be something coming out of a neighborhood that haven't had any investments in it? I'm looking at a Starbucks. And then in thanks to the mayor and Invest Southwest, we getting ready to break ground. I like cutting rivers and breaking ground, Lord have mercy, all through the, all through the pandemic. And this worked in calm just because of the pandemic. I use that opportunity to make things happen, something that I couldn't see, to try to bring out some hope. It wasn't about sitting on, sitting down and being afraid. You have to get out here and make things happen still and believe that you are protected and you're covered, just like we've been covered all the time. I have that deep-rooted faith that I can move mountains if you just put it in front of me, and if I can't go over it, I'm going to go around it. That's a way to do things. And in this council, we got 15 members going to be leaving, my heart is going to ache because I know that today is our last day of having a budget hearing with all of you. I've been thinking of that ever since we started this budget process. History-making moment that we have today, regardless of how you vote on the budget, because we have did far more heavy lifting than what we're doing right now in this council when it came to budget. Far more heavy lifting. Anytime we don't have to put a property tax right now, I take the little bit. I worry about tomorrow, but I got today right now. What can I do today? I look at tomorrow, when tomorrow come, if I'm around for that day. There's a lot of opportunities for all these departments we have, working with, have been tremendous because you work with the departments to get things done, whether it's streets and sand, whether it's business affairs and consumer protection, handling all the business doing and trying to make sure our business stay open, trying to make sure that they are kept with the protection they need and the public wave permits keep moving forward. There's a lot of innovative ways that everyone have worked. Family and support out on the street. I, I can just go through all the departments that we have, work with what we have, because if we vote no, and you can vote no, and hope you get what you need anyway, it's fine. But you can also vote yes and try to build upon that to make it better, even if you didn't get it this time. Because I've been sitting here for 23 years and didn't get it, so, and voted to help somebody else get it. Now I want to see you all vote and help us to get what we need as well. We deserve that same treatment. When some of my colleagues who are not here now, I remember going to them and saying, you know, we need to do something about these folks with their clothes hanging down. You know, they told me, he didn't give a damn about that. I'm like, wow. So what meant for some don't be meant for others. What's happening in some part of the city don't mean other people's care anything about it. But what you need to know is you care about your community. You care about who you represent. You care about the taxpayers that put you in office and vote for you every day, and you care about going out there, doing everything you can to help them, help the seniors, help the young peoples, help our children. We are struggling, we are some different times, difficult times, and nobody said it was going to be easy. Because if you had a mirror, you could put it before your face and see what's going to happen on the other side, God bless you. Then you got more eyes than a good master bug. Because you can't see it, but you can keep working toward making it better and working collectively with one another. It's, the disagreement is good, but after you finish disagreeing, then agree. So we got to Invest Southwest, I'm looking for that project, going to change Chicago Avenue. We got street skate projects going along, that's going to be a new city. I call it, going to be a new city. Wellness Center, PPC Wellness Center in our area, that we's putting legislation through now so we can build addition onto that. Then I just had Starbucks announced, they're coming. I didn't know nothing about a clothing store, but we have clothing stores that are still coming, even through the riot. When we can build back the neighborhood and keep these businesses open and keep them on the tax roll and keep doing what you can do each and every day, that's all you can do. And that's all that our community asks of us to do. And so I think that it's a good time to support the budget that we have today. It's a good opportunity for all of us to take a step back and breathe. And I want to thank all of my colleagues, all the work that you've done, those that have been here for all the years. have been here for all the years, some before me, some came after me, but last year, you'll be missed. You know you will, Sister. A lot of us, so all of you who are planning to leave, I know this is a day that I want to personally say thank you for your service that you rendered to the city of Chicago, to the community. And I want to call you all by name, but you know who you are. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity. And thank you for all of the support that you all have given me over the years. And just know that Thirty-seventh Ward, the light is shining there, and we're being blessed. So thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Alderman. Last speaker, Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Lightfoot, members of the City Council. I had to prepare written remarks for today, so this is really my last budget in this term. And so I want to start by thanking all of you for your trust in me over the last four years, serving as the Chairman of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. I want to thank former Chairman Carrie Austin for her early support and advice as I moved into this position. And to be quite honest, city budgeting was never my passion. I come from a planning and development background, and I hope I have lived up to your expectations and did my part to help guide the city on a more sustainable fiscal path, all while promoting equity, transparency, and most importantly, a better life for all of our residents. And I think that's reflected in the 2023 budget. I want you to look at where we started and where we have gotten to. Billion-dollar budget gaps, looming pension ramp payments, underfunded neighborhood development, nearly junk status from the credit rating agencies. This was our reality four years ago. Granted, over the last four years, we have had to take numerous difficult votes to dig us out of that hole, but we have not shied away from our responsibilities as elected officials. We didn't, as has been done in the past, kick the can down the road and burden some future generation with massive insurmountable obligations. We met these challenges head-on, and our city is better for it today, and we will be better for it tomorrow. Being good fiscal stewards is only part of the budget process. Tax dollars should be used to improve the lives of all the residents across the city that we represent, no matter what their background or their circumstances. This budget does that in a thoughtful, innovative, and fiscally prudent way. Not all public safety calls require a police response. We fund that. Fixing the well-documented affordable housing shortfall, we funded that as well. Expanded mental health services, we fund that. Police recruitment and training, including a new public safety training academy in the Thirty-seventh Ward, third time today, Emma. To bring our first responders into the 21st century, we fund that. Access to clean and safe drinking water by replacing lead pipes, funded. Utility billing relief, funded. Overhauling the city's outdated IT infrastructure, we're funding that. Replacing an aging city vehicle fleet, funded. Neighborhood capital projects to be funded in the GO bond. An Office of the Environment, that's in here, too. Let me remind you that a separate standalone office wasn't contained in the initial budget, but after a ton of work and advocacy, there is a real substantive effort to stand up this new department, starting with the Office of Climate and Environmental Equity. I'm going to pause here for a moment to briefly touch on this subject. Standing up this department overnight is not a responsible request. While it may be easy to move policy staff into a new office, getting the various field staff and enforcement officials under one roof takes a lot more effort. Field staff wear many hats, not all of which would fall under the Department of Environmental's jurisdiction. So moving these existing employees isn't as simple as putting it on paper in a budget book or reclassifying titles. We have to be thoughtful in assigning existing job responsibilities so that nothing falls through the cracks, and we are only being additive in this process. And as we have seen throughout the entire budget process, hiring is difficult. So assuming we can go out and hire sufficient staff is incorrect. I believe this is a compromise, the key word here, and it's a reasonable one and exactly the type of compromise we have all been asking for since I became Chair of the Budget Committee. Speaking of compromises, let me list off the many additional ways this budget meets the needs of Chicagoans as requested by my colleagues. First and foremost, because of our work together, the budget does not contain property tax increases. This is because of our advocacy and a significant compromise made by the administration. What it does include as a result of the budget hearings are the following. A Director of Veteran Affairs, four new positions in the Homeless Services Division, a Director of New Arrivals, additional dollars for animal care and control for their advertising budget, a Youth Coordinator for the Community Commission for Public Safety and Accountability, additional hours for general streets and sanitation laborers to move toward a ward-based collection system, an increased commitment for rapid rehousing from eight hundred to twelve hundred units, and an additional half million dollars to fund low-barrier shelters. Maybe most importantly, the budget also makes significant investments to meet the city's public safety challenges. The 2023 budget funds fourteen thousand and ninety-three police positions. Back in the lofty days of 2012 to 2016, the Police Department had between thirteen thousand four hundred and nine and thirteen thousand seven hundred and forty-two budgeted positions. Budgeted Police Department manpower is within historical averages. Beyond that, we are making investments to improve the lives of our officers. The budget continues to fund the recruitment and retention team to ensure we are strengthening our force with new, excellent, and diverse recruits. It funds mental health professionals for every police district so that our officers can have access to the care they deserve. Policing and Reform Office has been invested in to strengthen this office as we move our department towards of equity and inclusion. And it funds two alternative response models to both free up police to do actual police work and get the results for the residents of the treatment and care they need. This, my colleagues, is what we have been talking about, working collaboratively and having our voices heard. Let me remind you, compromise goes both ways. Each party compromising won't get exactly what they want, but we must be able to meet in the middle for the good of our city residents, and this is what this budget does. It meets the needs of residents like never before and does it in a fiscally prudent way. The Independent Civic Federation supports this budget. The Rating Agency supports this budget, as evidenced by their recent rating upgrades. As we saw during the most recent Budget Committee hearing, your colleagues from across the political and demographic spectrum support this budget. Finally, I want to thank the mayor, Susie, Jenny, Reshma, all of the department heads from the various city departments, and my committee staff and the mayor for being involved in the whole discussion around the crafting of this budget. It has been, I don't even know what word to use. It has been a trip. How about that?[1206.58][1206.58](Laughter). But in closing, what I want to say is that I'm asking each of you to think hard about the budget, what you want to accomplish in your wards, and how we can work together to make every ward, neighborhood in this city great. And I urge you to join me in voting for the 2023 budget. And I hope that we will commit ourselves a little bit deeper to being more collaborative and working together. Madam President, this concludes my remarks. And with that, I move to concur in the recommendation of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and adopt the 2023 Code Corrections Ordinance, which was ordered to be deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 4th, 2022, as O2022-3468 by a roll call vote.
Ladies and gentlemen, you should have in front of you a list of the various items that we're going to be voting on. We will vote on them in order. Alderman Dow has just called for a roll call vote on item number one. Madam Clerk.
Three, four, six, eight. Okay. The voting is open for item three, four, six, eight.
This is item number one on your list. Anyone needing assistance, please raise your hand.
All right, I will now take a voice vote. If your device isn't working, Alderman O'Shea. Oh, he's in, you're in. Alderman Tito Lopez.
He's right there. He just came back.
All right, Alderman Tito Lopez is in. The voting is now closed.
The yeas are forty-two, the nays are eight. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I'd move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
No.
The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Dow.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Number two, I move to concur in the recommendation of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and adopt the substitute 2023 Management Ordinance as amended, which was ordered to be deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 4th, 2022, as SO2022-3580 by the same roll call vote as was applied to the 2023 Code Corrections Ordinance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There's a call for a roll call? Madam Clerk.
The vote is now open. Please refresh your device. Raise your hand if you need any help. It's part of the management ordinance, so it just took part of the management ordinance description. So that is correct. All right, the voting is now closed.
The yeas are thirty-two, the nays are eighteen. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I'd move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
No.
The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Alderman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. Number three, I move to concur in the recommendation of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and adopt the 2023 Motor Fuel Tax Allocation Ordinance, which was ordered to be deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 4th, 2022, as O2022-3466 by the same roll call vote as was applied to the 2023 Code Corrections Ordinance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so order.
Go ahead, open. The vote is now open. Please refresh your device.
Wait a minute.
Oh, sorry. Oh, never mind. Just kidding. Just kidding.
Kapelman?
Okay, Alderman. Item number four. I move to concur in the recommendation of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and adopt the Ordinance for an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority and Cook County, which was ordered to be deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 4th, 2022, as O2022-3465 by the same roll call vote.
The request for roll call.
Okay. Item three, four, six, five is open. Voting for a roll call vote. The voting is now open. Alderman Vasquez, voice vote? Or did Alderman Vasquez is a yes? Oh, no. Okay, you're no. Okay. He's no. That's right. He came in late. Voting is now closed.
The yeas are thirty-three, the nays are seventeen. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I'd move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
No.
The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Alderman Dow, item five.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to concur in the recommendation of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and adopt both a series of corrections and revisions to the 2023 Annual Appropriation Ordinance and the 2023 Annual Appropriation Ordinance as amended. Both items were ordered to be deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 4th, 2022, as O2022-3632 and O2022-3025 by the same roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
The voting is now open. Please use your devices to vote. Hit Refresh. Voting is now open. Voting is now open. And the voting is now closed.
The yeas are 32, the nays are 18. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee and adopt the ordinance regarding the issuance of general obligation bonds for new money purposes, secondly, water revenue with the project bonds, Series 2022, increase in borrowing authorization of O'Hare Commercial Paper and O'Hare Line of Credit Programs, establishment of Midway Line of Credit Program, and amendment of various bond ordinances, which was ordered to be deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 4, 2022, as O2022-3593 by the same roll call vote as was applied to the 2023 Code Corrections Ordinance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Someone call for a roll call? We will have a roll call.
We are opening the vote for 3593. The voting is now open. Hit Refresh on your device. Yeah, two more. Did Rotha come in? Oh. The voting is now closed.
The votes are 48 and 10 nay. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wagasback, item seven.
Madam President, I move to concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee and adopt the substitute 2023 Revenue Ordinance, which was ordered to be deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 4, 2022, as SO2022-3581 by the same roll call vote as was applied to the 2023 Code Corrections Ordinance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There's been a call by someone for a roll call.
The voting is now open. Please hit your device's Refresh. The voting is now open. The voting is now closed.
The yeas are 32, the nays are 18. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wagasback, our last item.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee and adopt the 2023 Tax Levy, which was ordered to be deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 4, 2022, as O2022-3467 by the same roll call vote as was applied to the 2023 Code Corrections Ordinance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There's a call for a roll call, Madam Clerk.
The voting is open for item 3467. Please refresh your screens. Please mark yourselves, and I will do a voice vote. Alderman Vegas, have you voted? Alderman Tony? Alderman Tony is recorded as a no. And the voting is now closed. Tony?
The yeas are 29, the nays are 21. The yeas are 29, the nays are 21. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails.
Thank you, Madam President. I now move that we return to the regular order of business.
Before we do that, I would like to say a few words about the budget. Ladies and gentlemen, with the passage of this budget, those who voted yes reaffirmed our responsibilities as fiduciaries of the public trust. Fiduciaries are not just particular areas of geography, but of doing the right thing for our city overall. We must never forget our role as fiduciaries, particularly in this time when people are still hurting, still healing. We all know there is more work to do to meet the moment, but also to continue on the path of righting historic wrongs and giving true meaning to equity and inclusion as our North Stars. I join the members of the City Council in offering up great thanks to Chairman Pat Dow. Yeoman's work, not easy. Lots of long hours, lots of discussions, but it led to a budget I think we can all be proud of. Thank you, Chairman Dow, for your hard work. I also want to thank Chairman Wagasback for his work in the Finance Committee and his team. Another great stellar job. Thank you, Chairman. And I also have to thank the members of my staff. I'm going to call them the Financial Dream Team. Jenny Bennett, our CFO. Suzy Park, our Budget Director. Reshma Soni, our Comptroller. Ladies, thank you. You've done a great service to your city yet one more time and more work to come. And as we've said to our friends at the rating agencies, hard work does pay off. Thank you very much. I also want to thank Beth Beatty and the team at IGA, who are the true, probably, heroes of this moment. Thank you, Beth. Thank you, all the members of the IGA. What this budget passage makes plain is that no matter what the challenges or adversities we've faced, we've addressed them, the hard truths about our city, and tackle them head-on by serving our people, meeting their needs, and ensuring their work is reflected in everything that we do every day. Throughout these past couple years and despite a global pandemic, despite an economic meltdown, and despite periods of social unrest, we've come together. And time again, we've worked to transform our residents' lives and revitalize the neighborhoods they call home. We have many civic leaders joining us today. People are doing the Lord's work on behalf of the people in need across our city. We honor and salute you for the good deeds that you do, the sacrifice, the mitzvahs that you perform every day. Your work is not in vain. It has meaning and impact. And I want to thank you personally for being our partners on this journey. Thank you all. Inside and outside of this chamber, our triumphant struggle against these challenges has brought us closer together. And now, we are ready to move ever forward to continue creating thriving and safe communities and ensure our city's equitable economic recovery. Though our work is by no means over, we must take this moment to reflect on and be proud of what we've accomplished together. And you heard from some of that today. There are several important headlines coming out of this budget passage, all of which mean good news for our taxpayers and our residents. First, we must continue to get our fiscal house in order. We cannot make the kinds of investments in people and places that are necessary to set our city on a path towards prosperity without making sure that city finances are sound. And the headline is that hard work pays off. With the passage of this budget, we've continued to take undeniable steps toward securing our government's financial future. Our residents have and continue to benefit from our hard work. For starters, last year, we climbed the debt ramp to end scoop and toss. Because of this, we are now paying down our outstanding debt. That's like paying down your credit card and being rewarded with a better credit score and lower interest rate. Thanks to this hard work, by fiscal year 2023, we will have reduced our outstanding debt by $747 million. That, my friends, is real progress. The savings from this will make meaningful differences in the lives of our residents as they will fund the next phase of Chicago Works, the infrastructure program, and develop safer and more resilient communities through the Chicago Recovery Plan. Together, Chicago Works and the Chicago Recovery Plan amount to $4.4 billion, representing the largest and most progressive city infrastructure and neighborhood investment programs in a city's history. And yes, it is all transparent. It is all there. Our current fiscal stability allows us to make these transformative investments in a fiscally responsible way. We've also climbed our pension ramp. Unlike in the past, we have embraced our pension obligation. With the 2022 budget, we were able to finally climb this $1 billion ramp, and we are now paying an actuarially calculated pension contribution for all four of our pension funds, including police and fire. In fact, our revenues have improved so much that we're now able to go beyond making the minimum payment on our pension credit card and can now pay down the balance. With the passage of the fiscal year 2023 budget, we will go even further in paying down this balance by making an advance payment of $242 million above the statutorily required amount in order to bring down the balance from our pension credit card. This is meaningful to our retirees and to the tens of thousands of current city employees who do the work of public service with the expectation that their pensions will be secure. It helps our police, fire, laborers, and municipal employees. Importantly, the rating agencies and our bondholders have taken notice and are rewarding our hard work. So far, the rating agencies independently confirm this financial turnaround of our city. In the last three months alone, we've received seven upgrades across the city's various credits as affirmation of our responsible financial stewardship. For example, back in August, Fitch and S&amp;P provided three separate upgrades to various credits for O'Hare International Airport. These upgrades are the first in approximately seven years for O'Hare. Recently, Fitch also upgraded the city's general obligation and STSC credits by one notch and put the city on a positive outlook, meaning that further upgrades are likely in the next one to two years as long as the city, and I underscore this, as long as the city continues on a financial path paved by my administration and validated by a majority of this City Council. This is the first upgrade Fitch has ever made to Chicago due to improved financial improvements in nearly 25 years of rating our city. And just last Friday, Fitch also upgraded the city's water and wastewater credit by one notch with a similar positive outlook, the first upgrade in 12 years of the water and wastewater credit. These upgrades are huge. And let me tell you exactly why. Rating agency upgrades are important because it allows our city to borrow funds at a lower cost, like having one of your credit cards reward you with a new, lower annual percentage rate. Because of our recent financial upgrades, we are on the path towards having a credit card at a much lower interest rate, allowing us to save billions, billions in taxpayer dollars. We are very optimistic that other rating agencies will reward our hard work, and we look forward to securing even more savings for our taxpayers. I'm also happy to report that our economy, the most diverse in the nation, has come roaring back, continuing the recovery we saw in 2021. This is why we have exceeded revenue projections for last year and on our track to do the same for this year. Despite COVID, the future of our economy continues to remain robust and strong. This is due to our core industries, manufacturing, transportation logistics, life sciences, technology, and food and agriculture that have fared very well over the last four years. This city is full of Fortune 500 companies, innovative startups and everything in between, which have had record profitability and continue to drive our path toward economic prosperity. Even our hospitality industry, which took a huge hit during COVID, has come back with strong, steady growth in bookings in hotel rooms, reservations, conventions, and large meetings. This robust recovery was aided by our management of the pandemic, and I have to thank Dr. Allison Arwady, our great Public Health Commissioner, which enabled us as a city to open faster and rebound stronger than other big cities. It is due to the hundreds of millions of dollars that we pumped into the economy to support small businesses, emergency housing relief, and our continued equity-focused economic investments. And businesses have responded, ladies and gentlemen. For starters, in October of this year, as of October of this year, 135 companies have made pro-Chicago decisions, meaning that they have... made pro-Chicago decisions, meaning that they have either relocated to Chicago from elsewhere or expanded their existing footprint in our city because of the confidence that they have in the city of Chicago. 93 of these decisions were expansions within our city, 43 were relocations, and I'm proud to share that 25 were on our South and West sides. These 135 decisions are on the top of the 173 we ended last year with, and includes big names like Google, Abbott, Kellogg, and Kimberly-Clark. Our economy has come roaring back, and we're experiencing the strongest economic growth of the last three decades. Importantly, and also, for the first time in decades, all parts of our city are growing and feeling that economic resurgence. Our economy has shifted from a state of recovery to being firmly on a path towards prosperity. I must also acknowledge and thank the majority that voted to pass this budget for continuing to support public safety. We've come a long way in making our city safer, but the work isn't finished, and I know we have a lot more to do. These investments represent our commitment to taking the next step in the important work and making sure Chicagoans in every neighborhood are safe and feel safe. Now, I will never be satisfied until Chicago is the safest big city in the country. And I know that you share my resolve. In order to keep taking steps towards that important destination, we must continue to fund the police and other community safety pillars. That work starts with funding our police department, so that it is the best-trained, best-equipped department in the nation, and it means that we have to strengthen accountability. For example, thanks to our continued support of the dedicated CPD recruiting team, current recruiting trends are on track to yield the largest group of academy recruits in recent memory. Through this budget, we also committed over $100 million to provide officers and the department with new technologies, including more cameras equipped with license plate readers, cell phones, improved facilities, training resources, new vehicles, and helicopters. This will ensure our officers are better prepared and able to do their jobs safely and effectively as possible. It ensures that the facilities in which our officers work are upgraded. Importantly, this budget will also allocate resources to the continued civilianization of administrative functions within the CPD, ensuring that more sworn members are devoted to being the police and taking guns and gangs and community calls -- taking guns off the street, fighting gangs, and responding to community calls for service. We remain deeply committed to shoring up our police and fire pensions, the reward that our hard-working officers and firefighters rely upon after years of public service. That's why, in addition to climbing our pension ramp, we have utilized the first $40 million from the casino to make sure that we reduce our public safety pension obligation and included the $242 million in this budget to begin a new pension fund policy that allows us to prepay future obligations. In other words, a vote for this budget was a vote in support of law enforcement and for ensuring the pensions of our first responders will be there for them when their time serving our city is done. With this budget, we've also committed to funding other components of our public safety ecosystem, including violence prevention efforts and mental health services. Just with fiscal year 22's budget alone, we have made over $400 million in investments across initiatives, including street outreach. And I have to salute the men and women who are out there every single day, night and day, risking life and limb to defuse conflicts before they happen and to help people exit the streets and transition to a life of legitimate employment and safety. Thank you. In this budget, we also continue our commitment to help returning citizens, which remains a core part of community safety strategy. You heard a lot of conversation today about mental health, and let me give you some facts. Addressing mental health and trauma are also key parts of our community safety strategy. We have increased mental health funding more than seven times since 2019. As the mental health budget then was $12 million, and now, with the passage of this budget, will be $89 million. And what this means in practical terms is that we are serving more people than ever before. 2,500 annually prior to our administration now on track to serve 60,000 people this year, including, including for the first time, children and adolescents. Our community-based continuum of care is in over 50 neighborhoods, and we will get to 77 neighborhoods by the end of this year. And while we're on the issue of crime, I want to take this opportunity to say that we know there are parts of this city, especially on the North Side, that have felt the touch of violence like never before. To respond to those challenges, we've redeployed more officers to North Side districts, pushed to engage our community members even more, and committed to robust investigations into the crime patterns affecting all neighborhoods. Everyone all over our city has the right to be safe and feel safe. And while we are not near the finish line of to being the biggest, safest big city in the country, we must honor the hard work and sacrifice of our police, street outreach, and community members. Year over year, we are down 16% in homicides and 20% in shootings. These declines are among some of the highest in the United States. And though we have accomplished a lot so far when it comes to making our residents safe, we can and we will do more. This budget allows us to build on the progress that has been made, not retreat. And let's talk about other investments. When I came before this council in September to present the budget for your consideration, I ask you to be bold with me on the investments we made. I thank you on behalf of our residents, because this newly passed budget, we will continue to delivering on the promises we made to them, as well as enhance our ongoing efforts to create a Chicago that truly works for every person in every zip code. We can and we must provide pathways that lead residents out of poverty and toward prosperity. We can and we must ensure that they have every opportunity to find and land good-paying, sustainable jobs, or to start their own businesses. We can and we must eradicate the systemic inequities that have prevented far too many of our residents from unlocking the full potential for themselves and their communities. We must never shy away from making the investments in the people and places that make this city so great. This includes investments like we're making through Invest Southwest. $2 billion in investment commitments is where we will be at the end of this year, almost equally divided between city and private sector dollars. From streetscapes to vertical construction, retail, healthcare, affordable housing, community gathering spaces, and more, these are, in fact, catalytic transformative investments. When we raise the fortunes of the South and the West Side, we raise the fortunes of the entire city. And it is never the critics or skeptics who count. I am unapologetic, determined, and proud of these game-changing investments on our South and West Side. We will not stop. We cannot stop. We must continue to forge ahead. Another important way in which we're developing our neighborhoods is through the power of infrastructure, and specifically, our Chicago Works capital plan, which with the passage of this budget, you have renewed for another two years. This plan represents our city's first multi-year, multi-billion-dollar infrastructure initiative in decades and addresses the decades-long backlog in infrastructure needs that have hindered our residents' ability to live, work, and play. Since launching Chicago Works, the Chicago Department of Transportation has been able to pave 262 miles of streets and alleys and installed over 280,000 smart lighting fixtures across our city, saving us $100 million over the next decade. For the many residents having their street paved, this means that they can more easily and safely get to and from school and work, or simply feel that much prouder of the beauty in their neighborhoods. And what they tell me is, "Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for making this happen to us." And it happens because of the city council voting to pass this infrastructure plan. For these reasons and others, infrastructure investments, especially those aimed at uplifting our most neglected neighborhoods, will also be a key priority for this administration now and over the next four years. In addition to taking responsibility for the infrastructure challenges facing our residents, we have reasserted our proper place in driving a progressive environmental agenda across the Great Lakes. I find it vital to ensure that these communities hardest hit by climate change and environmental injustice, as well as the rest of our city, are able to withstand the threat that we see happening every day. That's why we've invested $188 million in this mission, signed an agreement to purchase 100% clean renewable energy for all city facilities, made progress on our goal of planting 75,000 trees to make sure that we have a true green canopy in areas and neighborhoods that need it most, and codified the divestment of the city's financial holdings from fossil fuel companies in collaboration with our city treasurer. The 2023 budget will help to further mitigate climate change and address the city's most harmful environmental challenges by creating the Office for Climate and Environmental Equity. This new office will steer our climate and environmental justice agenda. This budget continues our unwavering commitment to those who are homeless and facing housing instability. Importantly, we make an additional $7.8 million to help move more people off the street into stable housing. We will also keep working to build additional low-barrier shelter options. And Jim, you have my word that we are going to continue fighting that fight. No one, none of God's children, should be living on the street. The reasons they are there are complex, but we have to continue to make sure that we see our brothers and sisters who are in need on the street and do everything that we can to bring them home. This budget also reflects the commitments that we've made in making the city more welcoming, inclusive, and accessible. We are putting real additional dollars into this necessary work, and we will continue to press the federal government to step up and do its part. You are right, Alderman Raboyas. This is a national problem which requires a national solution. We will not shirk our responsibility as a welcoming city, but we need the federal government to be our partners in this work, and that means they must do more. In addition to the pandemic, our city has faced a number of other challenges as it relates to individuals coming to our city in search of safety and services. This year alone, we saw three big waves of refugees from Afghanistan, from the Ukraine, and from Central and South America. Each of these waves, we saw people coming to Chicago yearning to be free. For them, we continue to live up to our values as a welcoming city and vowed to never turn our backs on those experienced -- who've experienced so much grief, pain, and frustration, just wanting to live a peaceful life. Thank you to all the organizations and immigration rights groups that have helped us meet this challenge. I'd like to specifically thank the Salvation Army, the Resurrection Project, and the National Immigrant and Justice Center, as well as the 20 other organizations which didn't hesitate to create safe, welcoming spaces and provide needed services for the migrants who are inhumanely bussed from Texas to Chicago. Another important investment flowing from this budget is increasing our financial commitment to reproductive freedom. Following the Dobbs decision, which overturned 50 years of precedent, our city has welcomed thousands of individuals seeking reproductive health care from all across the nation, especially as state after state shuts off access or worse threatens to criminalize patients and physicians. To support organizations like Planned Parenthood and Chicago Abortion Fund in the wake of this horrific news, we originally stepped up and committed $500,000 in grant funding earlier this year. Now, with the passage of this budget, the city will commit an additional $3 million on top of our baseline of support to strengthen our reproductive health care infrastructure to support the influx of patients traveling from states that abandon abortion and other reproductive health care services. Again, thanks goes to all of the providers who are on the front lines and their partners for ensuring that the right to choose remains protected and supported here in our city. I also want to highlight the hard work we continue to do to make Chicago the most accessible city in the country. Much of this work is spearheaded by the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities Commissioner Rachel Arfa, who has really done a phenomenal job to connect residents with disabilities to city services, employment opportunities, and more. Just last month, I helped her cut the ribbon on the MOPD's New Career Center, which represents an investment in disability employment services as a central resource to help residents with disabilities access job and career opportunities, and will work with employers to increase inclusive hiring practices and create pathways to real, meaningful employment for our neighbors with disabilities. We cannot be a truly inclusive city if people with disabilities are left on the sidelines. Now, they have a resource, working in their favor to ensure their inclusion in the job market. Thank you, Commissioner. As we continue our journey to unlock the true potential of our city, we must lean on one another, as we have done in passing this budget. We have to be about each other's business, and most importantly, not leave anyone behind. In passing this 2020 budget, you, members of the city council, have ensured that the needs of communities that you represent were heard and addressed, and for that, I have to thank you. Of course, more hard work remains, but our continued willingness to work with one another has gotten us through some incredibly challenging and historic times and will allow us to overcome whatever comes our way in the future. And to our residents, thank you for being one of 2.7 million reasons why Chicago is indeed the best city and the most diverse city and the most welcoming city in our world. You have challenged us to do better as a city government. We have heard you, and you have helped us make Chicago's cultural and economic vibrancy secure for years to come. Thank you, one and all. God bless you, and God bless the city of Chicago.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. We have no other committee reports today. Matters on the agreed calendar. Alderman Harris.
Thank you. I've received from Clerk Anna M. Valencia total of three items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory commemorative tributary resolutions from the following aldermen: Alderman Hairston and Alderman Tabarez. I move passage of the agreed calendar in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Next up, new business. Clerk, please call the wards beginning with the 50th.
Claims, free permits, licenses, exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance; zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards; traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety; granted privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way; an exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Kappelman has a proposed resolution for submission of a public question by referendum to Chicago voters at February 28, 2023 Municipal General Election regarding homelessness as public health crisis, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alman Wagaspak has a proposed resolution for submission of a public question by referendum to Chicago voters at February 28, 2023 Municipal General Election regarding declining of utility franchise agreement with Commonwealth Edison, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alman Irvin has a proposed ordinance for designation of 1321 South Wood Street as Low Affordability Area, which is referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alman Cardenas has a proposed resolution for submission of a public question by referendum to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. for submission of a public question by referendum to Chicago voters at February 28, 2023 Municipal General Election, reinstating and strengthening 1994 assault weapons ban to end non-military manufacturing sale of assault weapons and high-capacity magazines, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Two committees called, the Committee on Committees and Rules and the Committee on Public Safety. The matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alman Harris has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-023 to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of South Stony Island Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Harris also has proposed a resolution for election of Alvin D. Starks as Sergeant-at-Arms and Levader Purnell, Torian Cox, and Anthony P. Harper as Assistant Sergeant-at-Arms for remainder of the 2019 through 2023 City Council term, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of all the matter introductions.
Thank you, sir. Next up, unfinished business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
Next up, miscellaneous business.
I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
The date and time of the next meeting?
Madam President, I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Mr. Clerk, can you please read that?
Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago. Section 1. The next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, November 16, 2022, beginning at 10:00 a.m. in the City, in the Council Chamber on the second floor of City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section 2. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the same roll call vote as was applied to the 2023 Code Correction Ordinance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell, on a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.